We've got ready Mr. Pratt. Okay, we're gonna call, I'm late, so we're gonna call this meeting to order. And Dr. Baldwin has opening comments. I just had a little stroke because all I saw was opening comments and I thought I was making wear a dick from. And I really appreciate Dr. Baldwin being prepared there.
I just want to set up the program from this point on. The first thing I want to do is just recognize that most of them are here. Just recognize the efforts and the leadership that has taken place prior to get to this point to present this information to you. Roger Warren, who is the leader, facilitator of our capital outlay committee, and I think you've heard me say this in the full world, most of you have. As a principal, high school principal, I had the opportunity, actually had the opportunity to serve on that committee twice. I thought, in fact, we just talked about a blue ribbon model in our previous meeting. This is a blue ribbon model of how to truly collaborate across the district to tackle a huge challenge. And that challenge is how to take roughly eight point two, well, I'm really pulling the average out, Roger, eight point two million dollars to meet all the needs that each and every school documents and sends into our capital outlay committee process by priorities. And Roger will talk about this later, but I did have an opportunity to sit in on a few of those meetings. And I'll tell you, it's smoothly run as I've seen. I've had an opportunity to begin to be involved in that process for quite a while, so Roger, lots of thanks. Tim Fairley and Mary Beth are going to present later the facility needs update. A lot of research went in. Kim's not here. Kim's the office manager for Tim and Mary Beth. She was just instrumental this year in getting a lot of data that we didn't necessarily have here, but was located in county, the city. And so, a lot of thanks to them. I think you will be impressed with the amount of information and the format that is provided to you. And certain Greg and his staff are absolutely key. When you see figures on each and every one of those requests that comes in from the schooling system, someone has to go out and put a dollar figure beside that in terms of an estimate of what it would cost. And that's what Greg and his team do. Well, and finally Deborah Fritsby, who's going to give you an update regarding the operating budget, focus on the local funds, as everyone's aware. Although I may think we must present our budget to the county. And that's really a challenge this year. This is the first year that I've been at the central office that we've not had at least some indication of what one of the two state budgets from the House of the Senate would look like. So, we're having to compose this almost entirely on what the governor's budget looked like. So, Deborah.
Five percent today, there was a four hundred million dollar.
Plus.
Plus. Well, excess.
I saw that, and I certainly a positive sign, a positive sign.
Well, it's positive ink.
We want to see the ink on the paper, but that is a very positive sign. Again, I want to just, again, the program, recognizing the efforts of those individuals and many more here at the central office that continue to work with this. At this time, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Warren, and we'll start with our capital outlay.
All board members have the blue book. This is not a test book like I was in college, but this is a blue book that Roger has created. Isn't that good, Dusty? We don't have to take a test in a blue book.
I don't remember.
I do.
I was telling you the reason you did not.
Does it matter who's making that? Who's on? Oh, Craig.
Oh, through the church.
Get back to Mr. Bryan. I apologize. Thank you.
They're all the same.
Did you get your...
Yeah.
Carefully, I read this copy here. Yes.
Madam Chair, this is the board. Today, we're going to talk about the post-capital outlay, which is a blue book you guys have in front of you. Have we identified the needs, going back to what Dr. Baldwin was saying? We can classify them by classification A, which means it's absolutely necessary to continue operating, classification B, which is strongly needed to improve, classification C, which is future needs. Whenever we send out the budget call, the principals and directors go through and the needs that they have, they classify them in one of these three, depending on how they feel their request meets their school or department. Then we can rank them by, in chronological order, from one to how many other requests there are. For example, a class A, S1, would be a school's number one highest priority for their school, two, three, four, so on. And that can happen by classification. So, you can have an S1 for classification A, B, and C, and that's kind of how the order goes. Again, classification A, S1 would be a school's number one priority, and just still project from there. An M would be a maintenance request, or a maintenance need that they seek. R would be roofing. So, you see these little codes to the left of the descriptions in the book. And there are other ones, flooring would be F, HVAC, there's plumbing, electrical, so they're broken down into these to where you can tell in the book what type of request we're looking at, and what is the priority and rank of that request. So, the process review, again, identifying needs throughout the entire school year by department's directors. Then we go to the budget call, which happens into the fall. I send out a request for these, I send out an email requesting the schools and departments give their requests back to me, so that I can get them and give them to Greg and his staff, and Tim and his staff, so as Dr. Baldwin said, they can go through and assign a number to each one of these projects, a cost, each one of these projects, so that then we can have requests that go to the committee for discussion. And basically, this is the book that the committee decided on, the requests in here that are funded, went through the committee, we went through each request, one by one, and at the end, we came up with how much we were over/under the budget. So, we had to go back and do a second round of cuts, which is not easy this year. There are many, many needs out there. You'll see some of the statistics later in the presentation. So, this is the recommended budget that you have in front of you today for adoption. And pending adoption, it will be budgeted in the 15, 16 school year, and project activity will begin. It's important to note that while the funds are designated in this fiscal year, that doesn't necessarily mean that the projects will be completed next fiscal year. Some of the projects demand an empty school. Some projects demand weeks of nice weather. So, it's very important to note that not all these projects, we're gonna do our best to get all of them in, but some of them will probably carry over in a few years. Here's the projected revenue that we have for this year. This is the latest projection we have from the county for our Article 4042 sales tax. And we also add in some earnings, the sales tax reimbursement earned each year. So, our budget is roughly nine point nine million this year.
I wonder whether or not, like, does that just improve the economy?
It's improved the economy and the way that the sales taxes bill change in 2018. That changed the projections a little bit.
Can I take you back just for one minute? Back to your lighter weapon in the beginning, I'm sorry. I know that it's impossible with all the needs across the whole county to make it equal across all the districts. And so, presumably, one district is going to get more in one year and less another year, and that kind of all evened out a little bit. But do you take that into consideration in this process anywhere?
Yeah, the committee absolutely does. You know, you have Greg and his staff, Tim and his staff, that are on the committee each year, and we can go back and look at the previous books as to what schools were funded what in previous years, how the districts were looking in previous years, and take that into consideration for the current year.
Thanks.
We try to do our best to fund every school out there, and this year, we funded every school except for three, which are the three names. So, I was really happy about that. We didn't have to go back through and look for anything. All the, every school got something this year. So, looking at the dollar figure requests, we had over forty-eight million dollars worth requests that came in from school departments, and we were able to, again, fund the nine point nine million. The quantity of projects that were sent in, we had about seven hundred and forty requests, I believe, total, and we funded about two hundred five, two hundred ten there. So, that just shows us some of the needs that we have in our facilities. Looking at it as a classification analysis, we were able to fund about five and a half million of the eighteen million in classification A. And as you can see, it goes down from there, and that also speaks to the ability of the department or school to be able to prioritize their needs, because more of the classification As's were funded in the future.
And so, I asked you this question earlier, too, but I just think it was understood. So, this gives you a way of looking out into the future of presumably, if Class Cs are gonna kind of move up into Class Bs, and they kind of know what's coming down the pipeline a little bit?
Yeah, so, a lot of our Class Cs are taping needs, roofing needs, that we know we're five, what, four or five years out from replacement, and they'll move from classifications as years progress. Part of the classification C is, I think, is the contingency that we have for unidentified needs that breaks in the middle of the year. For example, with, you know, if a boiler breaks in the middle of the year, we have to have funds to be able to fix that. So, that's where, that's why some of the classification Cs are funded, is for those type of contingencies. Here's a pie chart showing the type of project that was approved in quantity. It goes, it starts in technology, twenty-three percent, and goes clockwise all the way to HVAC and energy savings of two percent. I do want to note that the reason the energy savings is only two percent is because Greg and his staff has been able to get grants and rebates from energy savings and other projects to be able to do these energy saving initiatives, so we didn't have to use these funds for that initiatives.
Sure. I know Greg's here. What was the amount that you shared with us that you, the cost savings, energy savings this year?
This year, we're gonna have about a half million dollars, half a million dollars.
So, we are focusing on energy savings. We're just able to, Greg's able to find some extra money for that. Considerations for the future.
I want that money, Frank.
Classification A, unbudgeted requests. Again, classification A is absolutely necessary to operate. There's ten point six million dollars out there that was unfunded, in addition to three point four million identified roofing needs that were unfunded. We try to fund roofing, taping, those type of needs at a certain replaceable schedule, but the funds are not available to do that each year. You can see, within the next two to three years, we'll have ten activity buses that will meet replaceable criteria, which is also a need that we'll need to keep in mind as we go through this process in the future, and as we go through Tim's long-range planning. That pretty much concludes the presentation. I want to say thanks to all these individuals that are on this list. The process couldn't be done without them, without them going through and giving their requests, costing out everybody else's requests, and then coming back for about three and a half, four and a half days, and going through this book and deciding which projects are most important for our school system. We have Dr. Robbie Adele, Tim Fairley, and Mary Beth Kingston from Facilities, Greg Fox, and Belvin Halling and their staff from Maintenance, Barry and Robert Fritsby and their staff from Technology, and Chris Cheek was on there as well. We also have four principals, two elementary, one middle, and one high. They're on a rotating basis each year by district. And we also try to get, on each panel, we try to get a representative from as many different districts as we can there. So, that's the process. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
On the paving, don't, I should know this, being on work so long, but don't we have any scheduled count as needed, parking lots need to be paved, that true?
Yeah. Yes, we do. We go around, we evaluate every school, every year. Some over the years get a little worse than others. We might have one that's a higher priority one year, next year, it's broken down because of traffic and the winter that we had. But yes, we do prioritize all of our schools. We're trying to stay on a twenty-year repaving every school basis. If we can catch at the time, we can do a thing called overlay rather than a tear-out and full repay, costs us about half the amount.
There's also amount in there for if a parking lot needs an emergency patch, but there's money for that as well.
We call that that countywide. We have one countywide to take care of immediate needs that occur during the year.
Is that part of the contingency?
That's actually in countywide. That's separate from the contingency amount.
So, Matt just pointed out something to me that I'm going to say I missed when I was reading through this earlier this week. And so, of these, you say there's ten point six million dollars of Class A that was unfunded in this budget, but when you look through and you read this fine print, presumably, a lot of those things are getting taken care of also in other ways. So, it's, I would say, we can't exactly say that ten point six are not getting done.
Right.
They're just not funded by this budget.
Right, that's very cool. That's very cool. We have three different types of capital outlay funds that are available to us. For example, we have this Article 4042 capital outlay. We also have Article 39 and Lottery that are available. And that's the funds that Tim's going to speak about in a little bit. And if it says in the comments, "See long-range plan" or "Refer to long-range plan," it'll be on his list coming up. And so, you're right, that number is a little, can be looked at differently that way. But as far as this budget's concerned, that's how much we won't be able to cover with this expense.
Because when you first said that, and ten point six million in Class A, which means we absolutely can't function without this, and then, oh my gosh, we're gonna be shutting down schools and something, that's not how it works at all. There's a bigger picture than that.
Right, right. And, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would ask you, because that was a question I was gonna have. Of course, Cindy said, is the majesty, the nomenclature, the verbiage used here is very absolutely necessary to operate? And if we're carrying this to the county commissioner and presenting it, and they see that, and say, well, we see a shortfall, you've got nine, nine point eight million or ten million unfunded, you're saying it's absolutely necessary to operate, but you're operating. And I think somehow, there needed to be clarity brought to that, to make sure they understand that, if I were in their seat, I'd say, well, why in the world are you funding anything in Class B? I can't change the contingency money for major breakdown of the boil system, whatever it be, but just, that's good as well.
And one of the charges of the committee is the schools have the flexibility to identify which of those categories falls. One of the real challenges with the committee is determined, is this request truly falls under that category A, or is it better, if it's category B? Really, the A, B is where you, I think you have the greatest conversation.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's absolutely true. You know, while a Class A to a school may not be a Class A in Tim or Greg's mind, in our book, it's gonna go down to Class A, because that's how the school looks at it. It may be passed on as, you know, Greg or Tim say, we can wait a year on this, this was a higher priority this year. A good example of that would be, I don't know, a roof or something like that, that, you know, yes, it's gonna need done quickly, but we have a roofing, we have a contingency of patch roof, we need to, but they didn't get for last enough a year, for example. But in the school's mind, it needs to be done.
Can you talk to the board regarding the source of the funding? Because I think what Tim's going to present is a totally different source of funds, it's more long-range, but exactly where that nine point eight million dollars came from that was provided for.
Again, we have three sources of funds for capital, Article 4042, this book. That's a sales tax that comes directly from the county to us for capital needs. Each year, we go through this process and budget out those funds. Article 39, those funds are more, we use those more for debt service and long-range planning, that Tim will get to in a little bit. And then Lottery requires yet an additional amount of oversight, initial amount of approval has to go through the state. And we'll talk about that in a little bit, about determining which projects are most important to go through lottery funds as opposed to Article 39 and 42. Does that answer your question?
And then, I should know this, but is ninety-eight, a forecast, ninety-eight, nine point eight, thirty, I don't have the exact figures, is that a forecast, or is that the actual decision?
That's a conservative forecast from the county. To continue on to that, we have a waitlist of our top six projects that are funded, but if the revenue comes in higher than it was projected, we're gonna start hitting those, that waitlist as we go down. So, it is a, it is a projection. It's been pretty close in past years. There hasn't been a whole lot of deviation from the total, but we do have a plan in place. If it does come up higher, if it does come in lower, that'll take away from our contingency funds.
All right, any other questions for the board?
This is, I should, this is the activity plus criteria for replacement? I think it's like five years or a certain...
Is it two hundred fifty thousand miles?
Fourteen, two fifty.
Fourteen years or two hundred fifty thousand miles. And I think Joe mentioned that most of our replaceable criteria beats the years more so than the miles.
But even if we don't live in Lake County, and have to drive all the way to the world, bless their hearts.
Yeah, it may depend on district.
Yeah, maybe. All right, are we ready to move on?
Madam Chair, Superintendent Baldwin, and members of the board, we're here for you to present our 2015-16 proposed operational budget, also known as the local management budget. The first part of this presentation is going to provide some financial facts, history for Buckingham County schools, but I think it's important to know how we go about preparing for re-promotion, where the losses that we've had to sustain over the past five years. We're gonna talk about a five-year analysis, and some trends for the per-people expenditure comparison. We're gonna touch on the ADM trends, have our funding sources and the changes there, and a little bit about the reversion analysis. I thought this might be helpful for our new board members to understand where we've come from in the past five years. This chart illustrates Buckingham County school's share of the state funding provided to all the county school districts. This is the per-people expenditure, and we're ranked based on one hundred and fifteen LEAs in the state. And as you can see, the five-year history from 2013, 14, we were ninety-first in the state, ninety-fifth in federal rank, third in the local rank, and our overall rank was eighty. Over the past five years, we have, our ranking has increased from eighty-seventh highest out of the one hundred and fifteen school districts statewide to ninety-first. And I'm just referring to the state public school right now. What this means is that only twenty-four of the one hundred and fifteen districts in the state currently receive less state funding than Buckingham County schools. And that ninety of the one hundred and fifteen LEAs receive more per-people funding per state. So, as you can see, the trend, we did pretty stable on the total ranking, but it's fluctuated a little bit with the state, and certainly a lot was failed just because of the loss of the mother. So, I just felt like that was important, because you all might be asked in your travels of what is your per-people expenditure per student? And right now, for 2013, 14, ours is seven thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars. So, that's what each of you brings to that. Prior to 2013, 14, we relied heavily on the federal funding to help with reductions that we had in the state funding. And of course, you can see there that we went from seventy-nine to fifty-four, and then we're back up to ninety-five. What this suggests is that tougher financial times are ahead, as we all know, both our federal per-people funding continues to decrease, and so, we have to find other sources of revenue to offset those costs. And then here is just a bar chart showing the difference with the state being our biggest amount and federal and local. It's just a different way to present this in my chat. And then here is another one comparing us with the state. In case you're interested, the school district with the largest per-people expenditure is High County, and their per-people amount is six, ten thousand, one that we did. And why is that? Well, they're on the end of the, I don't know if it's because of where they're located, they are rural counties, they probably get funding sources that Buckingham County is not eligible for, Lowell, Snow County, and so, all that impacts, I'm sorry.
Fishing and...
Right there. But I thought that was curious to know, that they're number one in state per-people funding, and they're also number one in the state. So, they're number one, two top. So, anybody else? I thought that was... The next slide shows our audited ADM in percentage change from nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four, to what is projected for 2015, 16. My point in showing this is our ADM has pretty much stayed stable, except for this last column where we're taking a two point five nine percent increase, and majority of that is attributed to us losing the students to the two new charter schools that opened this year. So, and if you look at it on this graph, it's pretty much the same, and I guess my point is that we've been here before, so, you know, we're gonna have these kind of trends. So, we took a pretty hard hit this year, but hopefully, that would continue to increase, because you see, like, every five to seven years, it goes up and down, so. But we have been below twenty-five thousand before, too. These next slides show our funding sources, a multi-year analysis, and you can see in the pie charts for the years shown here, how much the revenue streams have changed. In 2010, 11, we had twenty percent in federal money as part of our revenue streams. 2013, 14, it went down to nine percent. And of course, the other state and local have to pick up those differences. And if you look for 14, 15, right now, our federal funding is at eight percent. We're almost back to where we were in 2007. We had our biggest source in 2010, 11, and of course, that was with the stimulus and our money was allocated to the schools by the federal government. So, that continues to decrease, and we're hopeful that we're not gonna be... And we're hopeful that we're not going to endure this federal sequestration, but we really don't now right now.
They've worked a long period of time. But that's, that's a fairly, that's fairly representative of over a decade and a half.
Absolutely. We're, we're pretty much stabilizing now. We were just fortunate that we had those extra pots of federal money to help us out. From two thousand ten eleven to this year, we had reversions or adjustments. Each year, the state would give us a budget that was not balanced, and we would have to balance it by deciding what to allot us to reduce. With the two thousand thirteen fourteen fiscal year and moving forward, we didn't have the ability to tell them where we wanted them to take the money from. They did it for us, which, you know, it was not the most popular decision. Because I think we better knew where our needs were and we had that ability to turn the money back in. So as you can see, it's been quite a bit of money. So as we lost this money, we had to absorb that with other funding streams or, you know, make reductions and things like that.
Why does the state do, what's the, it's got to be an accounting reason for that. I mean, why would you give somebody a budget that you already know six million two hundred and thirty-five thousand is coming back?
Well, that's a good point. I would prefer they just take it off the top and just give me what's mine and let me go forward.
But is it, is it, is it an accounting issue? But, but nobody knows this except those of us sitting in groups. There's no politics to that.
Well, no, they can say we gave this amount, but they don't, then we gave this amount, and that's what the public hears. And they don't say, we gave this amount, but we're also taking back this. And it's the second part of that, not my main reason. So from a political standpoint, it's brilliant.
Well, this has been a non-offer you've been going for a long time.
No, I'm not, I'm not picking, I'm not, I'm not picking sides. I mean, the reason is really, I think.
It's to shift the responsibility and accountability. So as you said, it becomes a political thing.
I don't understand why they would take away the discretion piece though. The politics behind that, which is why they would say you have to take it.
I, I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
That can vary too. I mean, that flexibility piece, and it's not necessarily tied into one particular party. It's just on the sort of years that discussion becomes, whether it's the lobbying of the school systems, the super tenors, if influences that or not. But that, that just, that can vary. How much less still is given in terms of determining where those cuts are? Or will they be, and there's arguments both ways.
I mean, you don't get it till October. And you started your school year with programs in place. You didn't know, you got to send something back. And you don't know necessarily what you started with people who are hired employees and working in variety of programs. July, in October, you get a budget. Okay, even, even if you've got the discretion to figure it out, the timing's awful.
The timing is horrible, absolutely.
Well, and then the other thing, just with the reversions, if they issue your budget and they say you need to have a whole lot of three percent, five percent, whatever, for possible reversion, it basically just sequesters that money you're holding. You can't move forward on projects, you have things you want to do. And then in March, they say, oh, we're not going to, you can spend it, but turning the balance shift on a dime is impossible. You can't get it spent, so they get it back anyway. And again, they can say, we released that money, you didn't spend it, that kind of thing. It is, I agree with Craig, I think, I don't know why, or problems.
So to offset all these cuts in funding, we've had to make the following personnel reductions. So from two thousand nine to two thousand thirteen, you can see one hundred and forty-three positions were cut from Buckingham County schools. And you can see the list there, I'm not going to read it. And all this impacts instructional programs. You know, you try to maintain those to protect integrity of the students, but it's really challenging to do. And then for two thousand thirteen fourteen, fourteen fifteen, additional cuts were made. And we got to the point where we're having to reduce days of employment, hours of employment, because there really wasn't anywhere else to cut. We're pretty much to the bone. And so the total for this time span from two thousand nine to two thousand fifteen, we've made one hundred sixty-seven cuts in personnel. So that, that's huge, that's huge.
And am I right in thinking that a fair number of those were people who are going to be retiring or whatever? So that's not one hundred sixty-seven people?
Those were positions that were not filled due to retirements, resignations and things like that.
Those still positions that we need, but maybe not cutting people off.
Absolutely.
And we probably should also point out, just as a reminder, that that number within higher head of county commissioners not stepped in and given us the money to keep primarily our teacher assistants.
You're exactly right.
So I, again, want to take you up to the faith for their ability to do something like that and really honor our students.
Because I think the teacher assistants were probably one of the hardest-hit allotments. And so, again, with extra resources from our county and being able to keep everybody employed in full-time status and still reducing some of the hours, we still, I don't think any person actually lost a job.
That's an excellent point. And as David was going to show you a little bit later, just our graph on the request to the commissioners for fifteen sixteen. We have been very fortunate, actually, the previous three years, because teacher assistants, for the last three years, that has been a questionable allotment. Is it going to be there or is it not? In fact, I think it was three years ago, it was one of those twenty-four hour shifts. It wasn't there, then all of a sudden it was. But as we take our plan proposal through the commissioners, it's going to be based this year on the governor's budget. And so that's an area, the governor funded teacher assistants for this year, but previously, the governor had funded that. And that was one of those that we found that the House and the Senate opted to take that money. So it is very important that we're given that flexibility. Because certain other areas that may be, may not be funded in the governor's budget is funded in the senate or final, final budget. And so that flexibility to use that to save positions has been extremely valuable for us as commissioners. So that's a very important.
So how does all this tie into our two thousand fifteen sixteen proposal? And I will preface this and, you know, what Dr. Baldwin said. This budget was prepared with a lot of assumptions, a lot of assumptions. So we're, we're using the best information we have available at this time. And hopefully, we'll, we'll get more information later. But right now, this is all we have to work on. So.
And we will vote again on the budget when we have more information? Or does that just then just come into our monthly budget amendments?
It will, well, we have to have this document to the county by, no later than May fifteenth. So we'll hopefully be approving this recommendation tonight. And then as we get more information, it will come through you in the initial base budget once all that information is available. Last year, I think we got that document and it was officially approved in November, December.
It was in November, December.
So it's late, it's late. So we'll, we'll shore it up and true all the paperwork by the end when we have all the information. So what we, we think we know, I'll just say it that way, is that here, the employer's matching retirement rate is going from fifteen point two-one percent to sixteen percent. What we were told to do was to use a five-year history. So we took the last five years of the retirement matching rate, and that's how we found out with the sixteen percent. So that's pretty huge, that's, that's a large increase. We were also given guidance from the Department of Public Construction that the health insurance premiums will go from fifty-three eighty-six per year to fifty-five hundred. That will not be effective until January first, two thousand sixteen, what we're being told. So that will only be a happy year of increase that we'll have to account for. The two new charter schools are adding additional rates for two thousand fifteen sixteen. So based on our percentage formula that we used last year, which was pretty spot-on, we think we might lose sixty-two positions, five hundred and seventy-two cuts. So, and so how all the local current expenses will be impacted. There are a couple of bills on the table right now to give school building administrators either a step increase or a three percent pay increase. We have twenty-four positions that we pay out of local. So based on that and incorporating their local supplement, we, we feel like that cost is going to be about seventy-five thousand dollars for Buckingham County schools. Of course, the health insurance rate increase would be seventy-two thousand five hundred and six for the locally funded. The retirement rate increase will be around two hundred and twenty-seven thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. And like I said, that, that's a huge percent increase. And all this is for the locally funded positions. The governor's pay raise, we're pretty confident that the, the second tier of that will be implemented. So they will be moving from thirty-three thousand dollars per year to thirty-five thousand dollars per year. So with that and the local supplement incorporated in that, it's about a hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. We have about seventy-five locally funded teaching positions. So they're all in the A zero to A four. Other funding gaps and unmet needs, and a lot of these are based on, well, the first one's based on some proposed legislation, the loss of the state funding for private education. That's four hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. And that's based on our projected, not grade enrollment, but two thousand fourteen fifteen amount. So I, I don't have anything else to base it on. So that, that number might change just a little bit.
I, I did have a question about that. I don't know if you would like to answer, but I'm just curious. With, if that is approved through the county, what would then be the cost for the students? The ten brothers said, are we looking at fifty dollars per student? Or I can't remember what the cap was.
We're wrong, we're not here, eventually.
I think you can charge up to sixty, sixty-five dollars per student, but I think right now, we're charging fifty. And I don't know if that's going to change.
I think that dollar amount was going to allow us to remain at fifty.
They need to allow us to halve it to fifty dollars. I want to hear that from Ron, trying to get a representation.
I think Roger might do that. But we'll move on, then we'll come back to that. The three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, that is just to, to, to maintain some current positions that we have due to loss of federal grant dollars. I think the, the last of our, our money is going to expire June thirtieth. So sustaining operations, we're asking for to maintain six, six advanced placement certified positions at the six high schools, and that's four hundred and twenty-five thousand seven eighty-four. And we're asking for sixty thousand dollars to expand the strings program that would be for a position and a little bit of money for supplies to start that program. Currently, that program is in five of the six districts. So this would make it all equitable. Go ahead, Dr. Baldwin.
Let me reference those for the last three. Ms. Warner, can you give more specifics for board regarding those positions? They're pretty key positions for your recruitment department.
The loss of positions would be our secondary data coach, that is a halftime position. We have two math coaches, officer included, in that funding. We moved those positions from local funds into that race to the top federal funding to offset other losses in the county. It seems like the right thing to do because those folks were delivering professional development. So it worked very well. All good things must end, those dollars are going away. These people's positions should not go away. So that's the, the thought behind that. The strings program, we will be adding that one position who will be at halftime at Reynolds, first semester at Reynolds Middle, and then second semester at Owen Middle. So that we will have strings in every middle school in the county.
Currently, all, all the districts have an option for strings, correct?
Correct. Reynolds Middle did not, but they have it at Reynolds High School. So it helped with that fear of having. And it's still a six-month program, semester-based, yes.
We maintain six advanced placements, certified positions, six high schools. Is that thirty-six or six?
No, it's just six. Actually, if we lose six certified positions because of the charter school extension, those would be the first six to go. But those are key positions for that particular program. So that was the reason we expanded those here.
That's the past point, that's the past point regarding the timeline, when the budgets have. These six positions are always at the very end in terms of the decision-making. Can we provide that extra support for those AP courses to be followed? And in the meantime, we're requiring those high schools, high school principals to be accountable to say, to show us that there are adequate numbers of students in class. And that's one of the last decisions we make, is look best, correct?
The last minute each year.
Yeah. So we're, we're saying, you know, we've, again, we think that's extremely important. We believe, our parents believe that those AP positions are important. And so we're going to, we need some stability with those decisions.
And those teachers have committed to get the training to teach that AP class. Probably that out of their pocket.
We've grown in the number of students taking AP courses. We have sixteen courses offered in about seventy sections across, across the county. So we've gone from nine hundred opportunities or grades in those courses to we were at least twenty-three hundred.
That's phenomenal. Say that again, please.
We were at about twenty-three hundred students or, but those are duplicated because some students take more than one course.
Sure, but it's still twenty-three hundred seats, yes.
And I would emphasize, when Ms. Warner talked about those race to the top positions, those positions impact multiple districts and multiple schools. It's not just being located in one particular school or one district. So it's impact across the county.
It impacts math, secondary data, ESL, so there are very, very many of those working at those schools.
And our goal, not to take from your time, Ms. Grace.
Oh, no, it's not.
But our goal is to offer, if I'm correct, is to offer the same kinds of classes in all of our high schools. Is that correct? AP classes.
Yes. Based on student interest. And if we have a student that's interested in something that doesn't make a full class, we have the Carolina Virtual Public High School online that we can offer as well.
Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome. We also have some other categories that fall under sustaining operations. Our home base product for our district would be about a hundred thousand dollars. Continue the support of the global initiatives, a hundred and eight. Tech book replacement, new adoptions, a hundred thousand. And then continuation of the Twilight Mini-Master Summer Program. And this amount is a little bit more because we were, we lost breath on the support of those initiatives. And then under technology, we have the cost of Canvas, which is seventy-four thousand eight hundred dollars. And then student access to personalized digital learning devices, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that is in support of initiative that Mr. Pace is working on. So I don't know if he wants to say anything about that or not. He talks over my head, I'll just be the first to.
Barry, could you, I, I know the interest, certainly the, I just went to the personalized digital learning devices. But could you also reference what Homebase represents and what Canvas, both of those are interconnected and what they mean for our classrooms and then?
Absolutely. So Homebase includes all of the products from Pearson that the state has been working on for, going on a decade now. Including school debt, which includes a lot of resources, different resources for assessment and access to item banks as well as digital content, digital curriculum. The state obviously is trying to ramp up that and the availability of digital resources ahead of twenty seventeen, eighteen for House Bill forty-four and now six sixty. So Homebase for us also includes the student information system for our school and some other pieces to educator evaluation. Canvas is the learning management system that the state of North Carolina recently completed, an RFP process for, pretty intense process, where they looked at several different LMS products, learning management systems. For example, Moodle comes to mind, being well-known, Haiku, Angel, Schoolology, there are a bunch. But Canvas emerged as the cream of the crop. And one of its biggest strong points is ease of use. So there are several districts around the state that were part of the pilot for Canvas. And it looks to me like significant number of school districts and charter schools in North Carolina are choosing to opt in to Canvas. And we surveyed the staff here for their feelings about our current LMS, which we currently use Moodle, been using Moodle for several years. And in general, the satisfaction level was not incredibly high for that.
So this does not replace PowerSchool?
No, this does not replace PowerSchool. This becomes an integrated piece of the entire package. So PowerSchool and SchoolNet, the Learning Object Repository, all of those pieces, they don't include an actual LMS. And so the state disparate, kind of all over the board in terms of that. But one of the things that we know for sure is that in the school districts where we've seen successful digital learning initiatives take place, an easy-to-use, integrated, robust learning management system has been a key piece to that puzzle.
Can you, I'm sorry, just can you define what a learning management system is? How that, how it's different from PowerSchool?
So in, in PowerSchool and SchoolNet, you might assign an assessment to students. And SchoolNet can allow that assessment to take place and have feedback for the teacher in the classroom as well as administration. And that information is growing, the availability of resources there is growing. But when you talk about a learning management system, and let me mention, the Learning Object Repository, which I mentioned, it has learning objects, digital simulations, infographics, videos, et cetera. The learning management system allows a teacher to put all of the content, the digital resources, the lesson plan, to those learning objects, the course, like if the course has Module 1, Module 2, Module 3, in order, where students can jump around however they're assigned. But they can go into the learning management system and they can progress through the course. And so many of our instructors now use Moodle for that, and we use it for professional development as well. But it's a little clunky, and so.
That's the tech word.
That is the tech word of the day. Canvas is, it's not fancy, but it's easy to use. And that's the feedback. We have several folks that are using a sandbox version of it right now. And that sandbox will become our actual LMS. And so the state negotiated a significant discount on the price for Canvas. And Canvas has been gaining momentum rapidly in K-12 and higher in the last several years. So the merging is the ones who are getting it right.
So will Barry Moodle and raise Canvas?
We will, we will migrate the content.
He likes his work better than mine, that's good.
We'll migrate the content forces over from Moodle to Canvas.
And we'll do that, will you?
Well, we'll start this summer and continue. Moodle will coexist, we'll move and migrate content as quickly as we can, with a first semester focus and then a second semester focus.
Will the teachers have to migrate it, or will it happen somehow automatically?
So part of the contract is migrations, including migration support. So within this, migration support is included. So there'll be some tools that we can use.
So why is English teacher won't have to go live and physically move all my stuff from Moodle over here? Or I might have to do that, but I have to get some support with that?
Definitely some support with that. At this point, there may be some interaction that we have to do with staff. As much as we possibly can, that would be made easy for them. Up to, see real touch. But there are, you know, there's going to be some courses where, you know, the content doesn't just automatically migrate with the tools, and then we'll go in and work through those. So we've got four, five years of content there to migrate.
I have to keep this buried, I have to keep this buried simply basis. So when you think in terms of Homebase, you're thinking more in terms of the student management system that's in place, administrative, what you need to do. But when you get into Canvas, as Barry has explained, that's really the curriculum instruction piece. So can you give the board, I want to throw it to you. Could you give them a concrete example of how Moodle for that teacher in that English classroom could be, would be a great assistance for the instruction piece to students?
I think of it in terms of, it's a place where my students can go and work through a course. When I think about Homebase, that's something that, there's a lot of resources for teachers and students, but it's, it may not be the teaching resources. There are item banks in which specialists and teachers sit down and pull for online assessment, but I think of it more of a formative way to measure instruction and inform our practice. The LMS gives us a place, teachers have so many resources and they're there and there and there. They need one place to house it all, so that they're not wasting their time always searching. And it allows for, when we use Moodle with specific courses, teachers have to load all that into that, and then kids have to access it through that format, and it's clunky. So this is a much easier, user-friendly place in which I think teachers will appreciate the work is there. Everything should be migrated over, but some of those things may not need to be migrated over. If they're years old, it may, so teachers will definitely have to have some weeding out.
Another terminology, but it allows both online and blended learning. So you're taking, you know, face-to-face course and creating blended components to that. And Canvas is just really good at embedding content. If you want to embed a video from another source, easy for the teacher to just put it in there. So a lot of different applications are just, Canvas has done a good job weeding those in.
Barry, don't we already use, I mean, Project Lead the Way is already built on this. And so our teachers are pretty much used to seeing this system if they're in the Project Lead the Way classrooms. That's the system.
And they love it.
And they love it.
And they love it. So Adam Buckmeyer, right here at STEM Academy, in the Project Lead the Way classroom, has been using Canvas for some time.
And our middle school teachers use it for our Project Lead, but that is the system which they use.
And what this integration will do, once it's integrated into the Identity and Access Management Service that we've talked about before this summer. When a student takes an assessment in the learning management system, once it's integrated, that'll automatically go straight into the gradebook in PowerSchool as well. So that integration piece is something that we just don't have with any other LMS. And so that is a barrier that this overcomes.
It sounds to me, this, it sounds to me that $74,800 is a bargain for the amount of time that is going to be saved for teachers. Am I correct in understanding that? And you're saying organizational, you know, merges over. So I guess if somebody says, why are we spending $74,000 on a new, on a new system? Am I correct in saying it's a bargain because of time is limited?
It's going for your student, not just for us as teachers, but the access it will provide for your child when they're trying to find all that mess out.
Wow, that's true, but they've been using Moodle, so I guess it's kind of, you know, they've had something. So why are we, you know, going with something new?
So Barry, the $74,800, is that initial cost of getting the product in place? Is it an annual subscription fee? This is not once a, I imagine they make improvements there.
This is an annual subscription.
So we'll see that recurring, that's a $74,800 recurring fee annually?
Correct. Well, state will do three-year contracts for that. And the pricing of this, their typical pricing is closer to $10 per account. And the state's negotiated under four, so $374 per account. So it's a significant discount.
And we think that discount's going to hold, or are we going to take this on and then it's going to top up to the $10?
Well, I think, you know, over time, as their business continues to grow, as North Carolina adopts, I think it'll be something that is a concern of them bumping the price back up to, you know, to $10. Their thought grew, and price points have equal to decrease over time. The more users they have, the cheaper it is. And they'll have competition, you know, lack of word and all the rest.
Was it a committee in the state at the same level that made this decision?
Yes, and they had first school districts.
You speak part of that committee.
Well, they definitely involved the school districts as a part of this process. So it was a joint effort, DPI, Wright Institute, and school districts. So you had Eaton and Jawan School District really basically doing this as an entire district. They're also one-to-one at high school level. And so they were heavily involved, as well as Rockingham. Rockingham County Schools has been with Canvas for five or six years. They were the first in North Carolina to go with Canvas. And so they were heavily involved, and others. So we had the, one of the instructional technology facilitators from Eaton-Jawan here for a regional technology director's meeting and sat down with him. Had all of our digital learning facilitators sit with him, go over all of the different aspects of the software. Had a chance to ask a bunch of questions, and that was a part of our process. But at the state level, it was a lengthy RFP process and looking at several different solutions. This is the one that emerged clearly, Ms. Clearler.
So you were comfortable that the $74,800 buying the entire package and get into it, especially that we have this add-on that they're going to be trying to sell to enhance the robustness of the system? Do you have, has that been addressed, has that been looked at through very thoroughly? The reason I ask, we had a selling situation with David Hill, and that was a real challenge.
Right. So anything, you know, can change, of course, but this is an all-in price from what we're seeing. And so it's what it is for account, and you get the solution, and we will help you. We, I have an anecdotal story to share there too. So we have our sandbox, we have several media coordinators and teachers using that. But we've also had folks go in and sign up for a demo account. And we had somebody give feedback recently. After they had signed up for the demo account, somebody called them to, on the phone personally, and asked them how things were going and if they needed assistance getting up and running, so.
That's a good sales tactic.
Right. See the commitment to seeing this through, making it work, and creating market share, so. And a lot of other school districts have looked this over, have tried and up and down, and quite a few opted in. The biggest, of course, is, we know of for sure, is Charlotte Mac is all-in. So, you know, they're in the middle of some big digital learning initiatives and have fully committed to going 100% Canvas to their learning management system at the same price. So, questions? We'll roll on next time. So, next item here, of course, is personalized digital learning. So I want to answer any questions that you have there. Of course, you've seen capital expenditure and continue going there. In terms of our long-range strategic goals and pointing towards, like we've talked about several times here before, House Bill 44, robust digital learning 2017, 18. And we have a plan, that plan is aggressive plan. Our infrastructure is now in place, following a lot of work from a lot of people in this room, and Buck of all those, who led that charge to make sure that our infrastructure is ready. Not just having high-density wireless and access point in every classroom, multiple in the commentary, not just the fiber and all the switching gear, that kind of infrastructure, but also classroom infrastructure, smart boards in all the classrooms, and just getting everything ready. It's been a major process, but we're there. So now comes the plan for rolling out digital learning. And in order to meet that 2017, 18 goal that we've set, we need to try to look at approaching this as a three-by-three plan. Three, in other words, three grade levels per year. And so when you look at that, you look at the ecosystem choices that we're making. The request here, I think, is showing that we're in, you know, we're putting a lot of skin in the game to make this happen for our students, to give them every possible opportunity to personalize learning, to be college and career-ready, and we're asking for help to do this, to make it possible. So that's where you see the $750,000 from the end. So any questions?
I'll throw the great blow, and also just quite a bit of discussion with impact, because this is impact that sort of really led this initiative. Talk about the devices, I know several questions about the length of time with any device and how that's done.
Sure, be glad to get into that. So jumping into the digital learning plan. What we have done over the past year with the Media Technology Advisory Committee and with leadership, with digital learning, with curriculum instruction, is really do an evaluation of where we are as a district in terms of our experiences with different platforms and our goals for students. So at the end of that process, we have made the decision that in fourth through 12th grade, we would like our students to use Windows devices. And so we're referring to that as Windows to a world-class education. At K through 3, and looking at the staff preferences, surveying the staff for their preferences, we see a shared-use iPad scenario. And so taking things into evaluation like incorporated science, technology, engineering, arts, and math across the curriculum, and personalization, looking at fifth grade science in the grade, looking at your math and your reading in the sixth grade, taking into account the. taking into account the fact that our staff and students here have over a decade of experience using the Microsoft Windows platform. We decided our platform choice is that way. And so in terms of the rollout, we decided that we'll start grades four, five, and six in January of twenty sixteen. So that gives us time to do additional professional development. The team here, between digital learning facilitators, media coordinators, curriculum instruction, the coaches, have done a fantastic job in terms of professional development, getting people excited, getting people prepared. And so now the work begins to evaluate device of choice and move forward. So, questions?
Yeah, so how does that work? I mean, an intermediate school, perfect, you got fifth and sixth graders, they all get it. But here I am in middle school or middle school, two grades get it, or one grade gets it, and then all the other kids are going, wait, I worked mine, bring it on.
Well, the feedback that we've received so far on the preview of the plan has been positive, so I'll share some of the feedback. So from a media coordinator perspective, principal's perspective, this rollout has, if you look at the middle schools, in the middle schools, you'll be rolling out one grade level, one-to-one, in January twenty sixteen. So you have that opportunity to prepare the staff and then go and experience the proof of concept there and learn lessons. And then you do the following two grade levels the next year. In the intermediate school, it's all the students, fifth and sixth, but it's only two grade levels. So you're talking about two grade levels of software and applications, those types of decisions and choices. And then in our K-five schools, you're only talking about two grade levels. In the two-fours, you have one grade level, K-four, you have one grade level. And so we've got a lot of different schools in those grade levels. But for the, most of the schools, it's not a complete total school one-to-one in that first year.
And that seems like a good thing rather than not a good thing?
Correct, correct. And then you have those fourth graders with experiencing the one-to-one for half of a school year. The teachers experiencing that, the fifth-grade teachers experiencing one-to-one with students for half the school year. And then they're acclimated, and they've got the entire school year in fifth grade where they're one-to-one and incorporating science, technology, engineering, arts, and math in a deeper way, more personal way. And then we have chances to evaluate after that year and a half. Of course, it takes time for folks to become comfortable with this. Typically, you see a three-year period of time for comfort. Well, we know that, we acknowledge that, and we're gonna try to do our best to meet the needs of our staff and shorten that comfort as much as we can. And so that's part of this process as well. And the choice of going Windows four through twelve helps with that in terms of, you know, they're used to using that platform. And so we think that will help shorten that and bring the continuity. Also, the choice of going four through twelve grade, in terms of that produces continuity from four through twelve as opposed to a switch from fifth grade to sixth or some other grade.
And so if my sixth grader gets a Windows device in that second half of the sixth grade, will that device come home with my sixth grader over the summer and then go back again in seventh grade?
So that will approach that as an at-school use to begin with, just like we did with, as the Discovery Academy, just like we're doing with the elementary in terms of the pods, where there will be an opportunity there for time to elapse, a comfort level to grow, and then the principal, you know, likely the principal or a team, you know, leadership will make a decision on twenty-four-seven. And so that could look a little different.
So even though this school year, the kids won't be taking them home in eighth grade or something, just start.
At the beginning of the rollout, it would be an at-school use, and then we would work our way up to that. The systems are in place, though, for off-site filtering, and those systems are in place. So, and then taking it up a notch, you have the sixth graders moving into seventh grade. They will have seven, eight, nine getting one-to-one, going one-to-one that year. And so the middle school has that chance and opportunity to prepare, and then they're one-to-one, in essence, a year and a half from then. And then you have the ninth graders at the high school going one-to-one, one grade level. Those are your, you know, largest school, widest sort of range of needs. And you have then the following year, the ten, eleven, twelve. So the school gets an opportunity, everybody in school gets to see what it's like, experience it, and then you complete that rollout. At that point, you have fourth through twelfth grade, one-to-one, at near the beginning of the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year, which is our target, your goal is to make a significant difference in the lives of our students, in the community, robust digital learning. And when you talk about kindergarten through third grade and shared use, I like to think of it as, and we'll have some public-private partnerships, we'll have community support throughout this whole process. But I think that there will be support mechanisms that come alongside our kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. And the plan, you know, spells out that it's gonna be a shared-use iPad in those first three years. So I think that need will be met. And then at the end of that third year, we evaluate where we are in terms of first, second, and third. And assuming a four-year lifecycle, that's our plan is to get this right in terms of device choices, so we have a four-year lifecycle. And then definitely first, second, and third is on the table to be one-to-one as well. So you have at that point, first through twelfth grade, you're on a four-year lifecycle where you refresh three grade levels each year. So that's like.
That's the plan.
So with that said, this is an annual ask for the county commissioners, because every year we're up there. And, you know, and then are we, just out of curiosity, do you lease these, or do you buy them, or you all got them?
So we explored a lot of those options. Deborah, I appreciate all the work that you put into that, and we did a small pilot of the lease. But the decision that we made is to purchase and to self-insure with loaner pool available to start with. Now, some of your mature one-to-one schools, some of them have made the decision not to do owners after they've gone through a process of mature. But we'll have a loaner pool, self-insure, do some in-house repair, as well as some warranty outside as well. We currently are in a position now to take care of that K-three need in terms of iPads. If they break, screen break, we do in-house repair on that now. Significant costs that is there, I really appreciate my team learning, you know, how to do that. And so that's, that's the plan there, so. And that affords an opportunity for us to not one-hundred percent rely on, you know, one source of funding. For purchasing, you know, we can, you know, we can rely on multiple sources of funding by doing that. Whereas if we were leasing, we'd probably have to rely on one single source. So that plays into wanting to, wanting to get this, get this in place.
The shared-use devices, for the iPads for K-three, so that's not one-to-one, what's the ratio there that we hope to get to? How many devices, or how many kits per device?
Right, so we had, you know, published a specific goal. So in the system, in inventory, we have about three thousand iPads. And so that's a pretty significant number. Ideally, and again, this would be, we want to personalize. And so, you know, it changes based on what you're studying, what the needs of the students are. But we're moving to more of a model of access to five in more classrooms. Allows more opportunity for personalized learning and digital learning than, say, a cart of twenty that is only shared in that classroom once a week, or something like that. So, and the media coordinators are doing an awesome job behind that. Robert Frisby and John Parker, they've done an incredible job working with the media coordinators. And without our media coordinators, we would not be in a position to do this. Our media coordinators have really, over the last three, four years, stepped up and said, we're gonna, we're gonna lead, we're gonna adapt. They have been all aboard when it comes to trying to do the makerspace in the media centers, trying to do the digital storytelling, the green screens in the media centers, creating those STEAM opportunities already, and helping staff grow in their comfort level. So without the team, the digital learning team, and all the best professional development that they've done, bringing our principals in, teachers in, media coordinators in, showing them what they can do, video production, and all the rest. I mean, if I have a team that can tell you where to go to buy cable wires and circuits and, you know, to branch into those realms where our kids have opportunities to give hands on projects, to do, to learn about doing.
Barry, as you introduced this one-to-one initiative, we went through, you rolled it out on this three, four-year period. I'm thinking about an old traditional, also an old traditional type of computer lab where you have a computer lab set up and students come in and class, they share that. In my mind, I see those things one way, maybe since every student have their own device. Is, am I correct in that assumption? And would there be, would we actually be realizing savings from having to maintain that type of system and putting this in the hands of the user?
I believe we are, and that will take place over time, though, you know, it's one of those, obviously, there is investments there already, but I, we will transition, there's definitely gonna be a transition. And the world, mobile is it. So in terms of, you know, rolling down a portion of the iPads into K-three, because I want to be unified, it's a community effort, do the best for our kids as possible we can, and knowing that there is a use case for an iPad all the way through twelfth grade, and there are grants, there are funds that require certain things. There'll be a use case for some labs for a while, you know, K-twelve. So, but from the perspective of new purchases, yes, I expect at the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade level, you know, we'll start to see that immediately. And as we can potentially roll up some, you know, of the boat parts that we may have now that can be rolled up, from those grade levels that are going first, that helps with to end this process. But, you know, the, there'll be the time where first, the end of the first semester there, the end of the school year next year, where the opportunity for the principals and teachers, they're going to get through testing, where they're testing on the students' devices as opposed to testing in a lab environment. And, you know, who knows, we may be able to be in a situation at those grade levels where those students in the fifth grade are able to test in their classroom in appropriate way with the walls, you know, appropriately done. Where, you know, they're tested in the environment where they learn, and that may help them, you know, on those tests. And then there's opportunities to do potentially some arena testing if we want to do that. But because the students have the device, they can go to a theater commentary area and test that way too. So it opens up a lot of options there, and I think once, once people see those options, they'll grow the comfort level.
I have one last question. Um, I went to a really good workshop at the state school board conference about going one-to-one and hearing from school systems that have done this a while back. And one thing that really stuck with me is from a marketing branding perspective is that they didn't call it one-to-one. They called it more like digital learning program or something along those lines. And so I think it's just really important for us to think about how we market this, because it is, it really does fit in with our marketing, and this is a great resource that we're rolling out for our students and families. And so thinking about how we package that and how we brand it, and that it is about learning, it's not about the delights themselves.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think this aligns well with our strategic priorities in twenty twelve through twenty seventeen. I have added a slide for that on the timeline, so the digital learning timeline talks about that. And there are some places in the priorities where we might add, you know, the word digital in front. But it really does align with this plan and with our goals. And in terms of the state, I'm glad you brought that up. The bottom line here is we want to move now. Other districts, you know, are moving, and we're the eleventh largest school district in the state. There are certainly challenges, this will not be easy. But we want not just to be competitive, we want to be the best. So that's one of the reasons we've chosen to lend educational strategies together as our professional development. A lot of it, so that's really what it's all about.
Couple of quick comments, quick comments. Maybe, so I think Barry demonstrated to all of us his expertise and how fortunate we are in having applied technology. But the beauty of what he's been able to do in a short period of time is he has made an incredibly strong connection with the curriculum. And when these decisions are come to you, it's curriculum and instruction is leading the way. And that's a good point, I think that goes to your statement. Because across this state, and we will certainly not be the first, I mean, I'm not sure technically at Moore's Bowl was the first out shooting, but they were probably the most successful early on. But this is occurring across the state, but we're there, and there have been failures across the state for two reasons. Number one, the infrastructure wasn't in place. So going back to Amy's comment, we have to thank our previous legislators that opened the door to allow us to use capital funds for the infrastructure. It's been done, again, under his leadership, and infrastructure is in place. That's, that has to be there if you talk devices. And number two, you can't push carts for the force. You know, to put laptops in a classroom and not tie it in with construction and prepare teachers is again where systems have had failures in this state. So that has all been discussed, planned, the timing is now. This is the time where enough has occurred out in our school system. The enthusiasm, the preparation, the support, which is huge, it is, it is there at this time. And so I am going to request of the commissioners, they don't support this. She, I think that's a very good question. Is that going to be recurring over the next few years? I think every year we step back and see, you've heard what the state has mandated in the timeline. But understand that isn't unfunded mandate. So I've got to think, when I'm seeing these, this positive news coming in with tax revenues, because technology is talked about in classrooms considerably at the general assembly. Perhaps next year at this time, we're gonna be seeing funding that's coming from the state, which in turn will reduce our dependency to do this now on our local funding. So, and again, we're in a whole different environment now. What happened with Discovery Academy is an incredible model. We have got to keep our eyes wide open to what's occurring back there. Especially with corporate partnerships. Partnerships are increasing. We're making efforts to get out of the ivory towers and connect with the outside. I can tell you, there is businesses, there's advanced manufacturing that has a tremendous interest in this. It's a win-win for me. So that may be potentially, I hope it is. I hope it's a potential source for us to find some, some funding to play a part.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
That's why I have one quick question. Um, has, of course, have you ever done a presentation to the commissioners of basically what we just heard from Barry about the importance and exactly what you're gonna get for your eight hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars?
Well, I think that's part of what's gonna be presented when we take the budget to the commission.
So they'll have time to see that?
See that, right. And then they've got to make, you know, certainly make those decisions. But this is an opportunity to, and I would anticipate that our actual city school system has worked in concert with finance officers in terms of the presentation of budget. I think, I think both of us are moving in very similar directions. And both of us have been high flyers traditionally in this state. So we intend both of us to be there. And this is a step, I think, in that direction.
Another question about this slide. In terms of the figure for the text replacement and adoptions, will there be, I'm concerned that that may not be enough depending on what comes from the state. So will there be an opportunity to ask for more from the county commissioners for this line item when we know what's happening with the state? Can that be part of the?
I think that's a very good point. Right now, again, I believe so much of this proposal is based upon the governor's budget. For a number of reasons, I could probably argue back and forth, how reliable is the governor's budget when the smoke clears? But he did include, going back to flexibility, he did include funding for textbooks that could also be used in the direction of instructional devices. So, you know, but that may not occur, so. And I absolutely, the commissioners, I know our county manager understands this because this, this has just been the way it is. But because of the dependency on local funds, loss of federal and reduction in state, it has just become so much more important. So I would assume we would get the flexibility or have that option for flexibility to shift funding based upon what actually occurs when, you know, hopefully it's July. Who knows, it could be August, October, November, December, when we have a final budget in front of us.
All right, Ms. Frisbee, wait impatiently.
Oh, it's all good. This is where our language ever for this process. It's all good. Let's summarize what our proposed increase is gonna be. Down increases in associated costs, five hundred seventy-five thousand, if I said. Staining operations, and this is just summary of the previous slides. Nine hundred and eight thousand, six eighty-four. State budget impacts and mandates, eight hundred twenty-seven thousand, two seventy-five. And technology initiatives, eighty-two four, eight hundred. Our total proposed increase for fifteen, sixteen is three point one million dollars. Again, I'll talk about this for just a minute. The two new charter schools are gonna be expanding their grades. Invest Legion is gonna add grade seven and grade eleven. So we're estimating that we're gonna lose a hundred and sixteen students there. Franklin School of Innovation, they're gonna be adding grade ten. So we're estimating a loss of fifty-six students there. So that's a hundred and seventy-two students that we could potentially not have for fifteen, sixteen. And based on our thirteen, fourteen per people extension, that's about one point three million dollars that we might be losing there. Other things, the federal and special revenue programs are gonna have to pick up these costs that we just talked about, the pay raises for the A zero through A zero teachers and the proposed increases in benefits. There isn't any local funding to help support federal and special revenue programs. So they'll have to afford those costs. What, and a couple other things that we're keeping watch over is there's the virtual charter school implementation. There's that out there on the table that may or may not impact on many schools. The opportunity scholarship, that may impact their budget. And there's some bills that are out on the table that we're watching and that may or may not have any impact on the budget. So what our timeline is now is that we'll be submitting this information for approval tonight. We're gonna have air permission to the county commissioners by May the twelfth. We'll be presenting an interim budget resolution for 2015, sixteen at the two thirty at board meeting. And then we'll be adopting our final budget in the river between September and November, depending on when we get all the rest of the information from the state and federal government. So, and I want to say thank you to everything, my finance team for helping me prepare this information, all the other department heads and the collaboration that took place to prepare and get our numbers for, for this request, so. Questions?
Any questions? It is nice to have a wonderful staff that can provide this to us in such a palatable way.
I use the kids, principal, keep it simple, sweet. That's it. That's it. It is, but school finance is a beast of a topic.
Thank you so much, Deborah.
Thank you.
We're gonna take a fifteen-minute break and give Mr. Fairley time to sit down. We'll call this the end of our meeting to order. And thank Mr. Fairley and Beth for coming to provide information to us.
Well, thank you kindly.
Very good. I was lathering because I can't remember her last name. Very good.
Ms. Kingston.
Kingston, thank you. Sorry.
And she will be presenting to you in a little bit, a look at capacity. We also have a couple of other very interesting guest lecturers. Mr. Joe Huff, he's on deck there. And Roger Warren too, he hasn't run away, he'll be back. He's gonna speak. So we're gonna kind of tag team because this as well is kind of, is a collaborative way that this has been put together. We're gonna look at membership and capacity trends first. Then we're gonna look at a few regional population trends and transfers out of the school system. We're gonna look at three case studies of particular schools that have acute issues. Then we're gonna look at long-range plan and cash flow proposal. I'll point out that the appendix has some kind of backup information in the back there that won't be part of the, our little slideshow here, but it'll give you some additional information. Well, actually, let me go back and thank all these folks down here that have, that have been our facilities advisory committee that have offered guidance, have participated in several meetings, reviewed preliminary reports and helped me kind of go in a direction that made sense. I kind of get caught in the, in the woods sometimes. I kind of know this stuff and I don't explain it maybe as well because I kind of do whatever I can. So with that, I want to say if you have questions, interrupt any, anytime.
Oh, don't worry. That's not a.
The conclusions or recommendations made in here are subject to your review, comment and changes. We've done that in the past, especially when we get to a long-range plan. If there's projects that you think need to be considered in there, they need to be brought out because the long-range plan is kind of a, a collection of, it's kind of a laundry list, if you will, from capital outlay, things that capital outlay is struggling to do and things beyond that, COVID issues and all that good stuff. So in the past, we have modified that. It's a, it's a work, a living and working that. So for the first little bit, we're gonna look at system ADM trends. And this graph looks very similar to Ms. Frisbee's with one exception is that for facilities, we typically use the Department of Public Instruction best one of two. And our finance department and personnel department, they use an adjusted version of this that's based on allotments for allotment purposes. We kind of always use this best one of two. It's only a few slight difference, but this keeps our graph consistent. And as you can see, we did, we had a fairly significant loss. Certainly some of that can be attributed to two significant charter schools that opened. We have had downturns in the past. The economy seems to have, right now, the economy is really booming in this area. But in the past, when we had the academic downturn, it seemed that there was some relationship to a loss of.
What does that mean? Kindergarten registration, they changed, just changed?
Yeah, a few years ago, yeah.
So people didn't sign their petition?
It became later that you were eligible for kindergarten later. So we had a kind of loss of students that the next year, of course, they came.
General Assembly decided we wouldn't have that much that year. I thought people just didn't realize when registration was that they didn't. I understand, thanks.
And when we look at our projected trends, we have a fairly sophisticated system. And this year, I'm not going into a, a long explanation of how that happens, but I can assure you it's fairly sophisticated and it's been reliable in the past for kind of projecting two years ahead. I'm not as confident this year. It's been very, very volatile, the comings and goings, our principals that I've talked to have reported that even to this day, is that, is that true? That there's, there's comings and goings like there hasn't been in the past? So it's really very difficult to project where we're gonna be. We do have charter schools that are expanding. There was a charter school, fairly large one, that their application was not accepted. Maybe it will come back and that's the math that's science. School, maybe it will come back and affect us. But basically going through each school and looking through fourteen years of data on kindergarten and the survival rates from grade level to grade level at every single school, this projection, and I'm kind of letting it be what, what the numbers say, is a middle ground of where kindergarten levels used to be at schools and what happened this past year. They were lower this year. So this takes kind of a middle ground position. And it's, it's predicting a increase next year. We'll, we'll have to see if that holds out. We are gonna lose some kids to a charter school, no doubt, to two charter schools, grade level expansions. But we'll just have to see. I, I'm qualifying these, I'm not as confident. But let's go to the next slide. This is the basis for that projection. So looking at this, here's all our schools by district. Here's our current ADM at every school. And then we predict through the years, project through this, the system that looks at how many kids are in second grade, assuming a percentage of those are going to third grade, for example, looking at that history. This is, is the kind of master chart. And I have several charts like this that are not gonna be as powerful to you, that you may have to look in more deeply. But to make it a little easier to understand, we color-coded it to green, yellow, orange and red. Green means that we are in good shape in terms of our capacity versus membership. We've got a little bit of elbow range, at least one grade level. If we're in the yellow level, we're within one, one, not grade level, but classroom, class, which we're calling twenty-five students. So if we're in the yellow, we're within, it's kind of caution, if you will. We're, we're within twenty-five students of the capacity of that functional capacity of that school. There's two types of capacity that Barry is gonna talk about and explain for you in a moment. But if we're in the orange range, we're between the functional capacity and the theoretical capacity of that school. So we're using coping mechanisms at that time in those schools to accommodate some pressure of the ADM with the school capability of accommodating those students. If we're in the red zone, then we're beyond theoretical capacity, which is, is gonna be really difficult to cope with. So you can see, we have a lot of green, we have some orange. The Anka district, you see on the next slide, will show the intermediate school. This does not at all show the intermediate, but that next slide and in your book, you'll be able to go back and forth and see the effect of the intermediate school. And it will relieve pressure in the Anka district, for sure. Something that is critical to the capacity of the school are the cores. That's really the cafeteria and the media center. In the past five to ten years, because of technology, the size of the media center hasn't become, it isn't really the same cause of concern than it has been in the past because technology just goes out. The media center is almost everywhere in the school now. We don't have as many books, there's actually space there. So I think the DPI guidelines for media centers are maybe in need of update, if you will. So the media center, I have, I put no notes of caution. But when you start pushing a cafeteria and you have many, many seatings required, that's when our principals have a real hard time. So there's a few schools that our folks are having to be creative to accommodate their, their seatings and such. A few of these schools, and they look better than they are, but the layout is maybe not very efficient. It'll have columns and shapes that don't really, even though these relate to DPI guidelines for square footage, in reality, the function of those cafeterias and the number of kids they can see is not as good as it should be. So this is DPI, but, but really each cafeteria is unique. It's not just a big open room, they're, they're unique. So here's your, your excerpt for the Anka district. And you can see, here's where the Anka intermediate starts. And it produces a lot of green. Anka is a very small school. Couple of families move in, it has a big effect on the, on the school. This does not take into account modulars. One of those coping mechanisms is modulars. So while we may be in the, in the yellow here, they do have two modulars that they're gonna utilize. We don't see those as permanent solutions, but that is one of our coping mechanisms. So we're gonna be in real good shape in the Anka district after the intermediate school.
Now, can you go backwards a little? Sorry. Going down to the county wide school, let's say, we don't color-code those.
Because they're kind of controlled membership, right?
And so how do we come up with these numbers? Obviously, they're. Obviously, the currents are the actual, but we're jumping community high from 119.
Yeah, and that may be one of the reasons why that number, in the past, community high has varied. We can certainly accommodate 150. I plugged in a safety factor there, and that may be one of the reasons why the overall school district membership increases in those projections. But 150, it has been in the past, it's happened to 119 now. We are going to be looking at community high in depth here, and perhaps one of the reasons it's at 119 is because the facility itself has some, some challenges, if you will.
And the others are, it looks like, I mean, separating out discovery families.
Discovery, that's controlled.
Right, but the others are kind of steady, is what we anticipate. Well, aren't they controlled as well?
And that is controlled admission. Now, I'm not sure PEP is as controlled as, it's kind of who shows up there, but those are pretty.
But they have qualifying factors to enter that school, don't you think?
And they are, they're pretty steady for whatever reason, but.
Community high school just current number of students. They probably had the highest number of major graduates, which is a good thing this year.
They're successful?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
So those major graduates are not included in that 119? Not for students, and that's current as of right now?
Here's your modulars, and in the back of your, in the appendix, you'll see a modular report for each of the schools. So we kind of put that in, and it gives you an idea of how many modular classrooms are on site. And then utilization rate, we're at 90%. That's basically a function of the capacity versus membership. So you're utilized, you're at 90% capacity on average across the county schools. But of course, each one varies above and below that. Some are higher than their actual capacity, but some have, have additional capacity. Now, I will tell you that those, that capacity isn't all, isn't empty classrooms out there. It may be two kids here, four kids in this classroom, six in that classroom, so.
They don't come bundled?
No, they do not need to be bundled. And then this idea of a classroom shortfall is, of course, they're using modulars here. So at this school, West Bunkham Elementary, they have eight modulars there. Mary Beth, again, is going to explain the difference between functional and theoretical. But to get to a point where we don't really have to rely on those modulars as an absolute requirement because they don't have a long life, you need two more classrooms there. That's just kind of a guideline for you to see what it would take to get that school to accommodate. Now, modulars work, and they're there, and you can't move them around between schools very well because they cost so much to set up now, and they don't survive very well a move either. And some of the older ones are actually not legal to transport on the road anymore. But we'll, we'll use them if we have.
But that column there for this chart, there's a number there, those are all currently being used at those schools.
These are, now, some of them are being used for classrooms, a lot of them do that. A few of them are being used for storage where they have the capability. Some of them are really old and they don't want, you know, they're using them for storage, basically.
They actually had some removed in the last year or two, didn't we?
Yeah. But we don't move them around, do we, Greg? Like we used to between schools.
It's too expensive.
Yeah, it's way too expensive. So a couple of trends in your population, because that certainly affects our, our projections in the future and wherever we're going. I think it's really interesting that the second line here is that our death and birth rate is actually negative. More people die than babies are born here, but our population.
I wonder why you look at me? There is something transpired here.
It's, we're growing because people are moving here. That's, that's what's happening. And I'm not going to read each one of these, you certainly can. Let's go to the next one. This is, this is kind of interesting, that Asheville, Bunkham, Henderson, kind of the metropolitan district area is just 80 of 381 metropolitan areas that have not lost population over the past 40 years. Every year, there's been an increase, and with that birth and death rate, that's, that's pretty interesting. So I think, you know, it's pretty, it's not a high growth rate, but we rarely, we have never seen a different population there. So the people are coming in, here's some predictions by, by folks that have studied this, that what our population will be in the future. We gave about 3,100 people handling in, in this area. This we haven't shown you in the past, and I have to credit him to have used my secretary, who used to be out of Hamler and came to join us. And in doing this, she said, well, I could tell you where, where these kids are coming. I didn't know that was available because when someone transfers out of the school, typically, there's a request for the records. So she gathered all this information from the schools to understand where, not just the number, but where those kids are going. So this is all our high, middle, and intermediate. The next slide will be elementaries. But it's color-coded by charter, private, home school, and city, and at each school. And you can see where those transfers happen. And I think we're cool.
This is what happened one year.
This is just this year, yes. This is the beginning of this year. Because there's been a lot of comings and goings since. So this is a snapshot, a moment in time, kind of second month of this year. But you can see the charter schools have had an impact, okay? And then for, here's all of our elementaries. The south side of town took a hit from the charter schools. Sure. They did a lot of recruiting in that area, and, and they're nearby. So if you summarize all that across the entire Bunkham County School, this system here, you can see charters farther away have the maximum number of transfers, private is next, and city, and home school. And in the back, there's some additional informations and statewide comparisons as to how Bunkham County School ranks in terms. And really, Bunkham County Schools have less percentage of charters than the rest of the state. More home school, that probably doesn't surprise you than most of the state. And I believe, well, I've heard enough speaking on that, so I'm not sure about private school. But you can see that in the back in the appendix, if you want to see Bunkham County Schools compared to the state. And this is where I'm going to have Mary Beth explain this concept of functional and theoretical capacity and how that works.
So we've started studying capacity in more than the last few years. Each year, we ask the principals to give us the floor plan that shows how they're actually using the school building, whether it's a classroom, or a specialist, or computer lab. And things change a little bit every year, and sometimes more than others. So whether they have a self-contained intensive intervention classroom, the number of kids that enroll at that school changes. So then we look at capacity in terms of theoretical, which is the state, the state we're looking at capacity. And that, that state level only considers state-funded positions for core curriculum kinds of staff positions. And then we also look at what we call our PCS functional capacity, which documents the actual use of the schools, like we were talking about interviewing the principals. And then we also compare it to our local and state and federal funded staff at that school. So we look back and forth between the plan and how groups in those rooms and make sure that how efficiently the school's being used and whether, so that compares capacity compared to how it's actually being used. And then the part of the functional capacity is that not just with theoretical, it says, okay, every room could be used as a classroom, but actually, we have support for our kids for world language, or remediation, or ESL, things like that, that are in addition to just a regular classroom. So what else affects the school capacity? Well, newer schools, right, for current programs, a school that's built in the 50s or the 40s or the 20s is going to look really different in the kinds of spaces that are provided than a school built in the 90s or in 2005. We have more classrooms for the smaller pullout groups and specialists in newer schools. And then with, well, some schools being intensive intervention collectors, well, that has changed over time. Now, we have intensive intervention collectors, and there's one per district. So there, so an intensive intervention class only has up to 10 kids compared to a regular class that can have 26 or 29 kids. So that can change depending on how many intensive intervention classes are given here. And then there's also changes in school programs. You've been hearing about the, the extra federal programs that that funding is going down each year. So we have less of those or more depending on what gets funded each year. And then we also have our modular classroom. You see how efficiently that's being used, that can increase the overall theoretical capacity, because you'll see on the next slide, if you can go to that, that you have some more flexibility by using those classrooms. So this is kind of a typical school. This is Avery's Creek Elementary, and it is built in the 90s. So the yellow marked rooms are regular classrooms. And this is a K through 4. And so then there's the computer lab, there's music and art, another computer lab. These are four modular classrooms. And being a, a class, a building that was built in the 90s, there's some of these special classrooms that are resource classrooms, or sometimes an intensive intervention classroom, speech and varying counseling. So some of the older schools won't have special smaller rooms for those uses that can have your type of. And so then you can see out here, this school is really full. They have, they're using all of their space really efficiently, plus their modular classrooms have remediation, there could be one or two or three remediation teachers in there. There's ESL in this one, and they also have an after-school program. And then a computer lab and AIG, which is a pullout, but that's not considered a state theoretical capacity, so you don't get much luck. So then, we, this is the slide where at Avery's Creek, this year, there's 88 staff members. So this is where I take the help of Sam Brittle and finance to find out how many full-time equivalent staff members there are at each school and which area. We compare that to the number of classrooms that are being used and how efficiently. Some, some are, you know, almost full-time, some are, you know, quarter-time. Psychologists think that there's some uses that can share, and there's some that are just squeezing together and coping. Like having two ESL teachers in one, that could be pretty difficult. And then, this is sort of a look at the theoretical capacity calculated. So we can count all the classrooms as they might theoretically be used by the state, and that also self-contained classrooms and resource. But then in addition to that, we have all of our other uses. And so in this case, these are the classes that are in the modulars. So to look at it for actually how, if we were containing all of our real uses at a local and federal funded positions, and we have them all in the building, then we subtract them from the, from the actual theoretical use, and that's how we get the functional use. So we, so we act like the computer lab is in the building, AIG is in the building, remediation is in the building. And so in this case, you can see that Avery's Creek, while it's very close to its theoretical capacity, it's managing because it has those modulars. And of course, we've found modulars are not as equitable for use because they, they have a lifespan of 20 to 30 years. We're finding some of our older, even 1980s modulars can't be moved anymore, and they are energy inefficient, and they are also isolated from other uses that are integrated.
Okay. Thank you, Mary Beth.
You sure you're all right, Sam?
I think, I don't know, I need to.
You get all that.
Maybe she's just a little bit jealous.
So yeah, yeah, membership versus capacity, right? So we have to, and then we have to project where are we going in the future? And one of the things we do is look at the active building permits from Bunkham County. And when we did that this year, it raised a bit of alarm. You look at the permit, we had almost zero a few years ago, almost zero. But you can see districts have 100 in Owen, come on, Chip, 200 in. But then, look at Robertson, 484. And this is just from January 1st, 2014. These are open active permits. When we perused the website, if something was open and active and hasn't been closed, or, or something that just closed before 14, we, we didn't really see it. So these are open active permits, and I will qualify it, and the Reynolds District is actually a little worse than that because there's a portion of it in the city, and I could not get the city permits in there. So there, there's more than that in there.
Did you mean Robertson?
I'm sorry, Robertson District, I'm sorry. So a portion of Robertson is in the city, and I'll qualify that the city active permits are not shown in that 484 number.
These are residential?
These are only residential, yes, only residential.
So like an apartment versus a house, there's no distinction?
Okay, that gets really tricky because sometimes an apartment unit is permitted under one permit.
Right, that's what I was wondering.
And basically, and it's not happening that much anymore. If, if the contractor does that, he cannot get closed out on anything until the whole thing is done. So more typically, they're permitting units within a building, more typically, but it's, it varies. So you can see the breakdown. It's also mobile homes too is in there. Mobile homes, single-family, and multifamily is in there. So this raises it a lot.
Sorry, I want to go back to this, Ashville City not helping us with that? Now, these are students that attend Bunkham County schools but actually live in the city.
Within the city district, the city limits, correct, correct.
So what about neighborhoods that are like designated for retiree reasons and so forth? Do you exclude those or no?
No.
That would be the homeless.
So it's really hard to tell. It's really hard to tell how many kids are going to come out of, you know, a big house on the hill that, you know, 10,000 square feet, you know, but an apartment.
Or all of them, 14 children.
But mobile homes and affordable housing, workforce housing, those kinds of things. So it, it will take more than I have done to drill down in there and then make an educated guess as to how many kids come on down. I'm not sure I know how to do that, and I certainly find the time to do that.
I mean, when I see those apartments, is that, to me, is where the kids will be?
Yeah, a lot more, a lot more folks are in apartments with families than, you know, single-family homes than used to be.
These schools that are listed down at the bottom, do, do they mean something in particular?
These, I'm not sure why we had that, that should have been wiped out probably. It was probably part of my notes at one time, so thanks for catching me on that. You're paying attention, okay?
How do you, go back to that slide.
Okay.
And maybe you can't, maybe this is a housing question. And I hear what Mr. Craig is saying in terms of apartments, maybe more likely to be kids. The dynamic to me, that I'm not sure you can answer, is where are they coming from? See, I don't see enough large job creation yet here where they're coming here from other places. I mean, if those 200, the 55 apartments that are gonna be filled up in Leicester or in the Urban District or in that district just changing locations.
Right.
Then we really add students.
But it hasn't a fact. If they move to a different school.
It doesn't move to a different school.
It's just as difficult for us to manage movement within a district or between districts. They're, they're kind of like new folks in that.
It's almost, I was, I don't, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't know how you, how you have the foresight to be able to manage that because you can't know until somebody actually does.
Exactly. So this to me is a red flag. And that's.
Right.
I'm not sure how to, where to go with this. You, you would have to hire a team of folks to really drill down into, you know, is this affordable housing? And then how do you figure out where they're coming from? You know, folks move to less expensive. Next year, I'll tell you.
Yeah, next year.
Hopefully, it won't be too late, but.
But you're right, that is, that is a huge number. It doesn't go on this board longer than I have. That's a, I don't remember a year. We've seen various group displays this information every year and I don't remember that. Even, I don't think, I don't think we had those kind of numbers in 2007, 2006, 2008. Those numbers are much more than even I remember.
If you talk to the building department officials, they're slammed. I mean, I used to walk right up to the counter to get a permit, you know, submit for permits, but they're slammed.
These plans aren't for total new construction. It's not a permit for.
This is new construction that new, called out of their list.
That's the inventory of.
Yeah. Inventory of housing. But whether it's a retiree or a single person with no kids, I can't tell you that. But this just gives me a red flag that, wow, when I do those projections, I better, there's a little factor I can put in there. A lot of the projections are just pushing the kids on through that were in the previous grades with their survival, historic survival. So every school has a really unique and pretty consistent survival rates of kids moving from grade level to grade level. Now, give me an example. In high schools, every high school will see an increase. If you added up all those middle schooler kids, there's a lot more freshman high school kids. Probably because people are coming back from homeschool or, I don't know, private schools, like we can speculate why. But that's pretty, you can count on that happening every year. And we've looked at that for 14 years and see what that survival rate is. And the program kind of pushes that percentage survival rate through. But then there is a little factor for, well, what's gonna, well, kindergarten, first of all, we can see how many kindergarten kids. But we have no historic, we have no way of knowing how many kindergarteners are gonna show up. And giving you this report, we're just about to start kindergarten registration. So I can't even tell you where we are in that. So kindergarten is a bit of a, of a guess. But this told me that in the Robertson District, I better plug in a little higher number there for, for these new apartments, whether they're moving from other districts or not. And they may show up not just in kindergarten, right, they show up at third grade, fifth grade, high school. So that's about it to that.
When the Weirbridge Apartments came online, did we see the main kids coming out?
For Weirbridge? I'm not sure I can answer that whether. Although we have a couple of principals here.
Weirbridge, he's into S D, I think we picked up maybe three children in that conference at home.
It's too explicit, potentially.
Tie-in, yeah.
So what do we do with, with that concern that there's something happening down there in the Robertson District, maybe more so in the other districts? So we kind of focus in on that. And this is, Joe is gonna join us in a little bit to talk about some potential opportunities to redraw attendance lines for the elementary schools. Of course, all the kids go to the middle school, Glen Arden kids go to Canyon Creek. And the high school basically gets everyone. But, so we focused on the elementary. And here's kind of a map, and you can study this as to the types of developments that we're tracking and where they're located. This is the Avery's Creek attendance area. Here's S D's, S D's located there, Avery's Creek here, Glen Arden here. The river kind of runs through here and Hendersonville Highway kind of runs through here. In approximately 2002, 2003, the board redrew attendance lines because S D's was very much overcrowded. And S D's was the I I school for that district. And we had just done an addition to Glen Arden to accommodate to I I students. And we redrew the attendance lines and kind of have this, this leg of Avery's Creek over here to relieve S D's. Well, population changes, whatever, maybe aging out of some communities. S D's hasn't seen the growth that Avery's Creek has since I've been here. We've done three rounds of classroom additions at Avery's Creek. And we're at the property line now. There is not much opportunity at Avery's Creek without requiring additional property to increase the capacity of that school. So you can see this area and the river approximately here and Hendersonville Highway. We have Glen Bridge Road. Joe is gonna talk in detail about an opportunity here to kind of redraw those attendance lines a little closer, maybe with a little more natural boundaries. It doesn't work, I will tell you, to just cut it off at the river, which would be the natural boundary. It, it blows up the capacities of the schools, that, that simply doesn't work. So it's a subtle change that we're gonna present to you, okay? So seeing that, that, that serious implications of those apartments that we have opened and are about to open, we had Paget Freeman, who does a lot of schools, go in somewhat independently of me, so I didn't color things, and talk to the school about what they, what their concerns were. How could we make this school more efficient without really an addition in mind? How do we do it? What's working, what isn't working? And they did, they interviewed the school, they surveyed the campus and, okay, let's go to the next one. And they identified a priority list of concerns. Number one was the cafeteria belonging to lunch service. We have Ms. Montgomery here, she can answer your questions. But that was the, the number one concern of the folks that, heck, they can't really invite parents to come and have lunch with their kids because there's no room for them. It's a, it's because of these little notches and such and the serving arrangement and the flow of circulation. It's not a real efficient space for the square footage. Number two seems very simple, but staff toilets. We have added on and added on to these wings. And now the staff restrooms are still in the middle of the school. And it's over 300, I think it's 350 feet to get to the restaurants. And usually, there's a line once you get there. Very basic concern, but who watches your class, you know?
So we use, we use modulators, is there any idea about portageons for the teachers?
Ooh. Ms. Montgomery, do you want to? I don't, I hear you, okay.
Does she care more taking?
Like I said, we have to relax more.
I think outside the.
The number three concern that came up was actually the, the storage and use of the stage. And everything went there, the stage is packed full of custodial supplies, Christmas decorations, the, you know, all the stuff that the school has, there's very good storage in the school. And they're using every nook and cranny to teach kids out in the corridor, everywhere they can. They're not using the stage. They're using it as storage, so it's, it's a shame, but they have nowhere to put stuff. Another concern is that the, the office and reception does not have control of the front door. They're remote. So if someone comes in, now, we do have access control there and we can lock it down. But if, if someone comes up to the door and someone lets them in, they can head down and go anywhere they want in the school without going to the office. So it's a concern. They're managing the best they can. I think there is one little mini chair about this size as the waiting room in the office. There is, there is no waiting room. It's really crowded in there. Okay, so those are the, the, the primary needs that were identified. And then the next slide shows some, what we're calling the secondary needs. The teacher support area is woefully inadequate per D P I standards. We wouldn't build it this way. It's remote, as I said, because the, the wings have been extended. But the core, the core facilities have not been expanded when we did those additions. We have several modulators and it's just a long haul to get a kid all the way over there. And they're modular, you have to go outside, so that's a concern. And, and then the media center is, is not, certainly not up to the vision of the maker space and such for the school this size. That's another kind of peripheral concern. So we kind of categorized them, okay? The architect has proposed kind of a phasing plan. I won't go into it in detail, but it's, it's a little bit of musical chairs. You gotta do this to be able to do that, to be able to do this. And they've made a proposal. And on the next slide, they have broken it down into the costs. And it is not cheap, over $6 million to make this school much more functional, modern, and accommodate what's going on in there.
And that does or does not take into account population increases in the area?
It anticipates that we're kind of at the brink right now and we need to do something. So this is kind of an advanced planning study to, for you to consider that, what are we gonna do here?
Is that add capacity?
Would that really, will this add capacity? We don't have classrooms. There's not a single classroom other than replacing those modulars, so in that way.
Use it so that frees up a music room.
It, it does. What this really does to, to show you is that the stage is right here. Basically, it puts an addition down here with the stage and music and all that support. So that we can pull the admin up to the front door and, and provide, and then be able to use the former admin to fulfill those staff support areas that are lacking. So that's why it's kind of a multi-step. Restrooms here and in here. But does it add capacity now about?
Well, it takes away the modulators.
Yeah, the modulators get replaced by brick and mortar in A six. So that would add functional capacity, but would it really? We, we're not adding classrooms, we're just making it function better. That's kind of tough.
How old is the school?
Not very.
Ninety-two, is that, is that the same number?
Who designed it, Rick?
Mary Goddard. The firm she worked for had it in place. No, I'm sorry, it's Court Architecture. Yeah, Court Architecture and Paget Freeman did some of the additions to the classrooms there.
But my understanding is we're also talking about potentially moving some lines between these elementary schools so that hopefully overcrowding issues quite easily.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to fund $6 million right now when we have needs all across the town.
So you're seeing, I mean, we're gonna hear from you on the second, but it's, it's either or, you don't see that happen?
I see a little bit of this, if you're asking for my.
I am.
I see some of this, but maybe not to this extent right now. We, we need to do a few small things like future restaurants. You know, that could be done relatively inexpensively. And if you are amenable to redrawing attendance lines, take a little bit of pressure off. Maybe that could buy us some time as, also as a wait and see, what's gonna happen, how bad is it? That we could come back and incrementally start doing what makes sense after we have more knowledge about the impact of these apartments. And I will say that I've driven around this area and I've seen those apartments that are permitted and about to open. And I see a big chunk of property right next to them that looks like phase two to me. And I see across the street, a big chunk of property with a for sale sign.
That's phase three.
That is either another apartment complex, housing, or could be phase three. So it makes me real nervous about the future of what's coming down the line towards these schools in the Robertson District.
And we built Avery's Creek to take up the excess of S D's, which you already said. But at that particular time, we did not see the growth potential in that area. We thought Avery's Creek was gonna take care of the problem in ninety-two. And all of a sudden, Avery's Creek opened and it was full.
Exactly.
Well, hopefully, what I've heard is that it's not an application.
No, 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 but I, but, but originally, we opened Avery's Creek thinking it'd solve their problems for good eight or 10 years. And seriously, it filled up. Where'd they come from? Wait a minute.
That's support for.
Interesting.
So Tim, I just have a question, since you're talking about a little bit of both. Would you still look at priority than the cafeteria? Because even if you moved the attendance lines, it may still be not functional.
It would relieve some pressure. I'm gonna propose a little later for, just for cash flow purposes, because we need to, what we do need, and this isn't our own immediate cost accounting, that we, we keep the, we keep the cafeteria in mind as the next phase. But for relatively inexpensively, we could get at least some staff restrooms right now and help a little bit of staff support, support the areas.
What about the city getting the administration to the plan of the building, where would that problem come?
That, in order to do that, it's multiple steps down the line and it's big bucks. Because we've got to, really got to clear this staging area, which is right here, by building the one, the last spot we have to build on is right here. And the original port design did show this as a potential addition to that. So it's a one little bit of flat property that we can do something with. But it probably isn't appropriate to put classrooms there because it will only exaggerate the, the core areas that are woefully inadequate. So it's steps down the line. I think the dining hall, the cafeteria is the next step. But I'm gonna propose step point five and say, let's do something we can do relatively quickly. And if you're amenable to redrawing the attendance lines, that will hopefully buy us a little bit of time to see what happens. And then we'll go from here and revisit it next year.
So one other quick question, this might be a question of Ms. Montgomery. Just going back to the safety issue, if, and I know you have president and it's a safe school, but I believe we have an S R O. I believe we have an S R O that travels to real entrances. And right now, where, where is the S R O located? And if they're located fully away from the front, is there some way to shift them closer with a desk? I don't know.
She doesn't have an office.
Okay.
She's just, she's just there. And so she typically.
She's a presence though.
She's a presence. Yes. And we share her, John and, and Tina and I share her. And so she's there. She checks in and she walks around the building and facilitate, you know, just goes around, visits the classrooms. And then if we need her, um, she is there. We do have a desk that she can use, although it's not an office space. So when I talk with the architect, um, in this design, there would be a space available for her.
We have a space for Estes. So she, she kind of bases her, matures her stuff out of, out of the Estes office.
Yes, you do have an office.
But I will add, uh.
But it's almost centrally located too.
Well, the design that the sheriff had for those positions is that he really wanted those individuals to have mobile offices. He does not want them to sit still. He wants them to go into school, have a visit, you know, visit with the kids, visit with the administration, back in the vehicle, go to the next school. They wanted to work out the car.
Right. That makes sense. I just wanted to, you know, just wanted to know if there was still, for visitors coming in, do they know that at any moment there could be an S R O in that building? Because just, you know, you may not have one in there all the time, but just the thought that one might be in there could deter somebody from doing something. So that was just my question. And how visible were they?
Tim, I don't know lay out the physical layout. At least if we're, we're, we're landlocked there. I'm not, I'm not laying out. How much, how much flat land area have you got for those four blocks?
I can, from this graph, I mean, are you right on the property line there? No, no, no. The property line is, is probably, you know, just off of the screen here. And then, and it does kind of move away a little bit. Um, there is, there is some room here to do something.
Where, where the playground?
Back, primarily back here. Do you still have the playground off at the end of the swing right here? No. And I'll just, I moved that playground at least twice when we did the, kept hopping back. And I guess we ran out of property and now they're all back here. And then, and then up front too. There's playgrounds up front.
In the front and in the back.
Yeah. There's playing fields, uh, out here, you know, the parking and such. And there's playgrounds in the front as well.
And I will say it's a beautiful place. It's one of the greatest.
Yeah, it is.
It's a great job.
It's how the community used to.
Any other questions?
They've got how many acres here? Six hundred and forty?
Six forty. At that snapshot of time, right? It's a moving target. It, that did generate, yeah.
Okay. Tim, will there be any consideration, I'll throw this out when you spin forward. Uh, any considerations for modular restaurants? For modular people who make the classrooms? They also may, yeah, same kind of designs, but they'll have modular restaurants, half of just, you know, men's or side rooms. And really.
And we have that at West Moncombe.
Yeah.
But, you know, you have water, sewer.
Do you have to be a temporary thing here while we're chugging through this? We'll give you some of that at a lower cost.
It, it could, it, it could potentially, but where do you put them? I can't put anything in here. Building, probably, you know, building codes aren't gonna allow. I, I don't really have room here. I, I can't take the playgrounds. I'm not sure where I would put them. And then I, of course, I gotta run water and sewer. And if I'm chipping up a corridor to try to tie in, that could get really expensive. Break a modular with restrooms, what, eighty thousand men's and women's? How much to set it with everything? Another sixty, eighty?
Yeah, you're looking.
And if it's a throwaway item, that's hard to, hard to take. I'm not sure.
And then the place we have to put it is next to the Estes or the University.
And these folks, if you put, if you could put, put it right here, but how do these folks get to it? And how do those folks and those folks get to it? That's just a hard problem. We really need.
Safe features for the building. You got regulations. How far you guys stay off the building before you replace it too? I guess fifty feet or so.
Well, we do. West Moncombe has, uh, male and female, a dedicated modular building. So we have done that in the past. Okay. And here's where Joe Huff will come up and talk to you about attendance line.
Joe, if you want to use this here, that red dot. Good afternoon. Uh, we, like I was still dead on line, uh, trying to, trying to be just simple. Sweetie, is that my?
Are you sweetie?
I went to my third sergeant when I was.
You have your first, I have mine.
So we certainly did that. Um, it's the best fuck out of all that. Uh, we, we did that. We actually looked at that. So if you looked through this, uh, two previous courses of action, we, we did that criteria for natural boundaries. And it did. It caused a lot of second and third order effects. And, and, and we actually did the process, started saying, well, we need more criteria in order to accomplish that key. So let me go ahead and go into this next slide. What Tim has me to do, and we'll skip over, if you see where it says cap, and Tim helped me with the identification of that, and let's just eat the approximate where we'd like to be comfortably.
Yeah. And that is basically the capacity of the school minus one classroom. So it gives us a little bit of elbow room. And that's the guidelines I gave Joe to shoot for.
So before I started the process, I wanted to know where we were currently and then using that cap and using some, uh, some math. We knew that we were over at Avery's Creek about seventy-two. And we knew we had some room, uh, that we can go to Estes and Lynn Arden at seventy, uh, seventy-four and thirty-three. So we tried to keep those in mind as we know our forces of action. We, we quickly got rid of the first two. We came down to three, uh, three and four, uh, if you go ahead and do that slide. Now, like I said, the, the attendance, uh, line criteria, we use, first of all, lease and capacity. And that's the reason why the slide previously was important. Uh, we did it on, on scenario three, something we proposed. Uh, if we had to do a set on Avery's Creek, but we went above where we wanted to be in Estes and Lynn Arden. Um, but it was a close second. Uh, but we ended up with scenario four. I'm getting to that just, just in a minute. Natural boundaries are important, but keeping that integrity, road, terrain, school proximity. And then you'll see, uh, a kind of a box that I'll refer to. We, we kept I to twenty-six. Uh, we, we used Lynn Arden, Lynn Bridge Road. Uh, and we used the railroad tracks. And where I'm gonna talk about is Sweeten Creek, giving up the Avery's Creek into Lynn Arden. There's a railroad tracks made in like a natural barrier between Kansasville Road and Sweeten Creek. So I'll show you that. Got to keep in mind when we do this, we don't really, we, very few times in the county do we have to send a bus into, uh, another district. A lot of times it's just for a turnaround. Uh, so we really wanna make sure we're paying attention to that, cause that causes confusion, uh, when we do too much of that. So we looked at the roads, the natural boundaries, uh, to make sure we weren't doing too much, uh, bus overlapping. And then we forced lease change cost to keep it simple. So if you go ahead and next slide, I'm gonna focus this. Tim, uh, I might actually do better if I just slide over, but I think I'll do. I'm gonna focus here. This is on the current, uh, slide right here. This, uh, boundary that's currently existant between Estes and Avery's Creek. I'm gonna basically call it Heywood Road. That's H E Y W O D. And this is a fairly wooded area. And you can see based on the blank space out there. Notice that line as we drop that south to Lynn Bridge. And then this little area right here, and I call it Lower Sweeten Creek. Uh, and that's Dunbar Apartments, the oaks, uh, and I, uh, I have to look at it real quick. Just a second. Basically, a slide in this line over the, before they're using the railroad track and getting that Sweeten Creek over to Lynn Arden. I'm gonna see if we can do that transition. If you watch this line pop over, if you watch this line come in, if you stick with the top of that, okay? Not that real quick. Okay? That line just came over here. That line from that Heywood Road and that wooded area just came down to Lynn Bridge. And it was the simplest way to go about doing that. Let me pause real quick. I don't, I'll kind of pick up if you could have, pretty good of a, a line. So as I look in my notes real quick, uh, like that, that little triangle, that little northern triangle, that's in the back. Okay? That little, little drawing right here, um, using railroad tracks, pulled that Sweeten Creek over and then pulled, uh, Lynn Bridge. And I'm trying to tell you just a few of those things in that Lynn Bridge in northern that we fill up, just for your reference. That would be Woodbridge Apartments, Hill Road and Hill Road Apartments and Rockford Road. And then, uh, trying to make it simple possible, cause that's the only area open left that we have with busing, is on Lynn Bridge. So we basically use anything on the northern part of Lynn Bridge, the Estes, any of the southern parts of Avery's Creek. Okay? So based on that being as simple as we can, here's how it ended up, uh, based on our numbers, going back to it. You'll see up there at the top, witness scenario four, simplest we can see. It turned out to be five hundred and fifty-two. Now, if you remember, currently we're at six thirty-five. So we actually managed to take a bite into Avery's Creek with eighty-three, as Michael showed. And I'll, I'll reference those areas. That Lynn Bridge area is roughly about fifty. And then that little triangle, Sweeten Creek was about thirty, or eighty right there. I kind of just summarized that below. So Estes, seven eighty-two, currently it's seven twenty-seven. Uh, they're picking up fifty-three. And, uh, I'll go back real quick. The cap was, uh, we wanted to be at five sixty-three. So you can see currently, uh, maybe we're, no, you're at five fifty-two, five sixty-three. You managed to stay under where you wanted to be by the road. Same thing with Estes. You managed to stay in front of my, seven eighty-two, cap at eight oh-one. Uh, Lynn Arden, that's bottom, four ninety-five is what this scenario would do. Currently at four sixty-five, take it up to thirty, look at your four ninety-five, look at your cap, four ninety-eight, you still manage to stay under by thirty. So it accomplishes all your criteria goals.
So these numbers, though, may change, right? Because we wanna allow some flexibility with families based on where the kids are or where. You know, wanna say, you must move her child, you know? So these, this gives us a guideline, but we don't know for sure that these are the numbers, right?
It, it's moving target, like Tim said. It's our best guess. Me trying to troubleshoot a simple scenario that, that you can have, that if you, if you needed to make a move, you know when that move will be, that's as simple as I can get at least change necessary.
You, 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 you're right about the flexibility pays, uh, is strongly toward that. But, but also say that's based on the, 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 the bustle. So even if the flexibility has, has been done before, uh, you, 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 the parents would have to be willing to, to, but they would have the choice. The other thing, Joe, is there's a brand new set of apartments. Where does that fit into that? So that's a considerable number.
Avalon.
Avalon.
I actually have, I brought that map over.
That's why I'm here.
I've got it right there.
I thought currently.
Oh, yeah.
Avery's Creek. And my understanding is that there should be some, some, you know, that, that parks there.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So.
So the new, uh, apartments, it looks like there's a housing development in that diagonal and then the big axis Dunbar. I think that's existing, isn't it?
Yes.
That would be it.
You have Autobahn Apartments with eighty-six units?
I'm just looking at new construction, mostly.
And Tim, the apartments cross from the needles on New Jersey Road. And that would have to be it.
Correct. Yeah, I, I believe so.
And again, that's, that's a considerable number. It's an auto.
Which one are you talking about?
This, is that?
Behind us there, but, um, how would I say it?
You would like the apartments.
No, John, you would reflect it. But Avalon.
Avalon.
Avalon. You got Avalon on one hundred and ninety-two.
Yeah, that's a big one that would move.
And that's in that area of Lower Sweeten Creek, that's new to Lynn Arden.
So when you're talking about this twenty-nine house development, that's actually in Estes, right? And then that other one by the X.
Yeah, that's in Estes.
That's, isn't that Avalon? That's the new one, I think that we're talking about.
Just above the X is Avalon.
And I think that this is definitely what's happening. So that would go into Lynn Arden?
That would move Lynn Arden.
That Lynn Arden would be.
That little triangle that's in Lynn Arden.
About the thirty students, overestimate.
So not counting that maybe the apartment.
Where's Avalon? Which side of the tract is Avalon? It's west, it's east, and it's, and it's, and it's Estes. It's east, it's Lynn Arden. Which side of the railroad tracks between Creek is, is Avalon? Cause that's your line, right? Coming out through that.
Avalon is, Avalon would be on Sweeten, right off Sweeten Creek Road to the left-hand side as if you're map oriented, uh, just above.
So it's west, west of Sweeten Creek. But it goes, but it's, but it's, so it's east of the tract. The tract is your line.
Correct, that is correct.
Do you know where Arden is exactly?
On the, uh.
It's like.
I know where the tract is. I know where that helps me.
Right now.
Dr. Martin, I have a few more questions. I have a few questions from a, from a, I don't, I'm philosophically opposed to re drawing the line for a lot of reasons. I mean, what we, as I look at this, I'll ask you your solution in two years ago, we looked at this school. In two more years, you're gonna be looking at it again. The instinct, if, if Moncombe County grows and the history of Moncombe County is that southern end is the most fancy end, I'm just gonna be looking at this continually every couple of years. Um, as superintendent of the school, would that be your recommendation with the best way to go to try to deal with these Avalon businesses? Cause I just don't feel like it is. And if it's a question that needs to be talked, some time to give us an answer, I'm certainly okay with that down the road because this is, we're, we're keeping a lot of things around out here right now. Um, and the, and the answer might be better formulated than taking a look at, the other option to me would be building some type of other school or adding onto a school or something along those lines. And then if there comes a comparison, which is better? Educationally, financially, all those types of things. To me, I just, I, I just think it's not, and I could be convinced otherwise, but I just, I just, I struggle. I don't think that's a long-term solution. And I prefer a long-term thought process and solution rather than short-term. Cause I always feel like if you do that, we're just too, you can't down the road. There's gonna come a point in time when we will have to make that decision. Cause you, your, your capacity, you're close on every one of these. Yeah. You're, you're there. Even making these moves, you're, you're, you're in capacity. And at a point in time, you can't build a school as quick as you redraw the attendance line. You just can't do it. If you get to that point where you gotta do it, two years, Mr. Trump, at least.
Yeah.
If you find the land and do all those kind of things.
I will add that, that Estes is pretty much landlocked.
Yeah, you're not, you're not adding anything there.
Avery's Creek is pretty much landlocked.
Lynn Arden?
God's a lot of.
Plenty of room there. And may, and maybe, and I'm here by myself, maybe it's a combination. Maybe there's some, some physical things that need to happen along with some slight adjustment in the tennis line. That gives us some long-term stability for people who live in those communities to know that every two years or three years, Moncombe County schools are not coming back to us talking about, well, there's a apartment complex over here open and now this happened and having to do that again. So I, maybe for a future time, that's my question is how all that, how's it get? My gut tells me this is not the best way to go, but that, that's not a good way to make a decision.
Yeah. I, I think that first of all, it's so cloudy. And I believe that we've given multiple options. Immediately, my concern, having lived in that area and seeing what's happening and handling a number of real problems. The immediate concern that I see is just this absolute boom that's getting ready to take place over on that Maraud Road in Avery's Creek area. So I see that as an immediate, immediate concern. Uh, if anybody tried to get to the new Asheville outlets, uh, the first five days. Uh, if anybody tried to get to the new Asheville outlets, uh, the first five days, the way to go, I'm told. I read, I read in the paper, there was some proposal with property on the industrial side, um...
Yeah, down in the, in the, we're down to your, your exit, your abandoned land.
Right, so, you know, I mean, I just, every, every indication I'm getting from those in the, in the business, uh, they should know. Tell me number one, it's, it's still a crystal ball, um, but that, that's a, that's a concern. I agree wholeheartedly with you and what's being proposed is a minimum moderate option to take care of something in a short term. If, if essentially it buys us time. I also agree with what you, what I think I heard you say is that if, if this type of decision is made, I'd say this across the county, to make this decision, we have to be very sensitive to those individuals that are currently in the pipeline, into a school and that there's adequate time for our staff, uh, my gosh, if there's anyone prepared to do that, it's the principals of the Rogers District in making sure that those individual households affected know that has time to, with flexibility, to make those decisions as well as getting the decision out there for people that are going to be renting these apartments. So they're asking, you know, parents, parents are going into apartments, they want to know what school are we going to attend.
Um, well, okay, so my, my concern is, um, Avery's Creek doesn't have two years, right? If we decided to build, so even if we said today, we're going to build a new school, that's, that's two years out and Avery's Creek is not... And if we had the land? Oh, there you go. Um, and the other thing that I see is just, and it's, it's just me speaking as a mom, but I look at the way that the attendance lines are drawn now and I'm, I'm looking at, you know, an area that is basically in the backyard of Lynn Arden, but instead those children have to get on a bus and travel across town, I don't know how many miles it is, um, to go to Avery's Creek. That doesn't seem like community to me. And, and I'm certainly sensitive to, you know, allowing choice and not disrupting lives, but I, I gotta just wonder, you know, if given the choice, would a mother or, you know, a parent, whoever, would, um, would rather have their kid closer to their house for their school as opposed to putting them on a bus and traveling all the way across town to build a school that's not in their neighborhood? Or anywhere near their neighborhood?
I think you're absolutely right, but it gets a little bit more complex if it's a parent with multiple children in multiple schools. As we found out with, with the intermediate, so that can play.
That is a complaint that we have with Coons and Kane Creek, is, you know, there's no way to get your child, if you want to be a car driver, to Kane Creek and other...
But the choice addresses that, that's the, that's the issue with the rest of it.
Right, so I definitely say whatever we do, I kind of, whatever we want to do.
It would seem that, that the short-term solution is, is the re drawing of, of the visitor line. And simultaneous to that is, is the approach for the new school. I, I, I have trouble with, um, accepting the fact that we can do some work at Avery's Creek, it's only cost us six, six and a half million dollars. And that would pay about a twenty-five percent roughly, maybe. I think an intermediate school probably paid about twenty-five million, a six million, so roughly twenty-five percent roughly. So why do that? Why not increase, and going back to where you got all the population, which one of the parks or things right there, and that was a pleasure to talk about. And we can buy that by land there, plot that thing right in there, and somewhere to catch a lot of that concentration. And you would be serving effectively all three of those districts as they continue to grow. It seems to me like that would be the ideal solution. But I think for the short term, and I certainly appreciate what Pat said, but I think for the short term, maybe we did need to make this adjustments to the lines and just to be able to accommodate what we're faced with. But on the play right now, deal with it, but at the same time, long-term plan says, everything he says is exactly right, it's going south.
That's where I am too, and I feel like we have to do that in the short term. And we also, I feel like it's also muted growth, that we don't have a good feel of what the impact's going to be and would be... It's always going to be a head of gas, but it's, it's really a gas right now in here to, you know, people have more information on these apartments later.
I would agree, yeah, I think whatever we do, we're going to have a hard for this, we're going to have to, and we're going to have to be talking principal, the manager, we're, we've got to be on this number, what's happening. We don't want, I think, that's, we don't want to get called into a, all of a sudden we've got an emergency, no way, no way to address it.
Is there open line, I know that there's no open line at our Estes, um, but is there? If we're, if we're talking about some school in a couple of years, we have, um, you know of an area that you would be talking about? So that, I mean, we're done with...
It should be during that.
I will say that when we looked and considered Coons, so we did, they, uh, searched, it was... Now, that was a school that wanted to be centrally located because it, it collects everyone. You've got a little more flexibility and a little wider search with what I'm hearing you say, you know, at, at elementary to serve a specific. They don't have to be as centrally located, but I, I will tell you that property on the south side of town is expensive and hard to come by. Because, because the opportunity cost of doing an apartment, return on investment, is so much greater down there that that's the golden price of property.
I'd be, I think, of taking a property that, uh, shot at this, what you say, my best consideration would be somewhere at what we can, like down in the Weeble area, where you've got the primary and, you know? That, that was a old, it can work.
Kind of nice.
Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah. Well, Karen said, really, it's weird here, that's true, yeah.
I'm, I'm late to this person, did I hear you say, I said, like, if you're, if I ask, I mean, you know? If all two are in these elementary schools, if they exist, that you may change your mind, but actually you're going to have the choice of whether or not to accept that? You're drawing up the line and going to the school or stay where they currently are, is that right? I mean, if that's the case, I don't know if it's right or wrong, because if that's the case, then we didn't do anything. If a hundred percent of them held their hand up and said, I don't stay where I am, then we didn't accomplish a thing. And we draw the kids line.
Except for, like, your kids on that.
Yeah, but we...
The kids in the future would not have that choice.
I mean, we've had, you know, thought in this, I had to pass around the idea that, you know, maybe if you're a white and a colorblind or a white or a gray, having the option. Which makes it to the kindergarten, you know, first step, most... I believe that's what we've done at Baxor, if you're already in the line, you could choose to stay in the line, but if you come in and join the line, then you're going to go to the other place. And the transportation is still an issue. Even though I was in the line and the attendance line changes, transportation's not going to be offered to me just because I'm in the line. There's too many lines that I think may be following me.
Where are we going from here? Probably, is there going to be a vote at some point on this topic?
Like maybe next month?
I mean, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that wasn't this month. Like maybe, we're making this information this month and then vote on it next month, I believe is what we do, is that correct?
And, and there may be more information, she was more, maybe for us to, us to point back. And we just really get your eyes on, and other than the committee, they have more recommendations, but this is the first time the board's seen this, so you may have, maybe wish additional information if we're brought back to the table.
Some, some of the additional information that may, I don't like to see is, um, is there a way to survey the parents that would be affected? Are they currently, are there kids car riders now or are they bus riders? So, you know, that, if they're car riders, then maybe they would, you know, there might be a much bigger chance that they continue on. And what grades are we talking? You know, how many of them are those riders, sport riders versus the lower ones? If we were going to look at a cutoff or, um, flexibility?
And would you say, sir, that you just mean, you know, the numbers of car riders?
Yes, not, not individual people, but if there was some way to find out that...
I don't think, unfortunately, I don't think it's...
If money's the water in the...
Well, no, I don't mind, I don't, that's fine, I mean, I think the decision is going to be a rider, you know?
I don't know how many, you're not potentially, it's just the options, how many car riders you have in that particular area, from that area.
From that area?
No. I just think about the winter, you know, like when I say you're, you're...
Yeah, we can find out.
It's not an impossibility, it's what you're seeing.
Yeah, we could get it, yeah, absolutely.
If that would be helpful.
Okay. Okay, well, that's, um, that's a lot of information and it's a tough one, got to move through, our time is getting a little short. We have two other, um, schools we're going to look at. We're going to go very quickly through North Buckland Elementary. It has been on the radar for a long, long time, there's a lot of love to it. But the population, the student membership has leveled off or decreased a bit. As soon as we started planning, all of a sudden, it leveled off, so it's, um, but this is a proposal for a similar capacity increasing, uh, concept at North Buckland Elementary. So we're, we're going to go fairly quickly through, you're going to see some similarities, uh, in that the, um... In that we have the, the same issues with staff support, uh, we have a very similar setup with the admin where the admin is set back so that if you do get in here, you can head down without going through the, uh, admin suite. That's very similar, okay, let's go, there's nine modulators here, that's the coping mechanism, they've been there for quite a while. This is a study showing DTI recommendations versus what's there, let's go to the next one. The summary of that past slide is that they're, they're short on DTI standards for core facilities, very similar to Avery's Creek. This proposal invases, uh, again, very similar, takes the, uh, the music and art that is kind of in the core, it moves it out to an addition that allows, you know, after-hours use and such, it produces a gym auditorium as opposed to just a gym. We have, uh, an auditorium here that's very good to call to, to work with, it's tiered, uh, seating, country, tiered seating. Ultimately, it could be taken over to provide the, the spaces that are lacking. The admin could take over two classrooms which could, which could be put in, uh, this type of space so that the admin has control of the front entrance. This is a, uh, the last phase would be a, a six or eight classroom addition. You can see the costs, again, it's more than Avery's Creek, we're in that six to seven million dollars candy phase. Uh, this, in the long-range plan, we'll see that this gets pushed out of the way, so again, a wait-and-see attitude. We need to talk about Community High School. It's an old building, it's a real old building. And it has, uh, it, it has issues, uh, a lot of ADA issues and such. Uh, we're not out of compliance, we've occupied the building the way it, it has been forever, so the building department is okay with it. But once you start doing renovations, then they're going to want the whole thing to be brought up to current code. So, uh, the architect has proposed kind of a multi-year phasing, again, as you can see, it needs an elevator, it needs a new roof, it needs a new mechanical system. It needs new windows, uh, the air conditioning, our window units that we salvaged from the middle schools when we did those renovations, you know, twelve years ago, and it, it has its share of issues. So what are some options? Well, what you just saw is options one, making all those renovations over time, there's the price tag. Okay, what's another option? Just putting, putting ideas out there. What if we were able to find an industrial building that was fifty to sixty thousand square feet? And we did a renovation similar to STEM, that sort of character, not a bricks and mortar, lay-in ceiling, the, more of a, uh, open plan, uh, cost less. Uh, if we could identify a building we, that was suitable, I have not been able to in my very, very brief look. See, you want it to be kind of centrally located, right? Because that's one of the faults of the school, it's out on the end of the earth there and those kids come from all over, so...
Wait, wait, wait. This is the end of the earth.
It's all about perspective.
He has to pack his bags, so that's down he goes.
So that'd be somewhere, and these are really rough numbers, uh, somewhere, if we found the, the right building for the right price or someone gave it to us, uh, we, we'd probably be in the vicinity of seven point five mil, million dollars to produce a school that accommodated the, uh, program that currently is happening out there at Community High School. A third option, could we build on this site? We have, uh, this proposal looks at this site and again, we build an industrial-type building, it's a metal building, but we can be creative with it.
Can we call it something other than industrial? I did, every time I say industrial, I just say it ugly, I'm just trying to be the mother. How about you, mother?
Dr. Ball would just brought up that Billboard Baptist Church is a commercial, or is that an industrial building that has been...
It's like new school buildings, mother.
But I don't want to give you the impression that these numbers relate to a school that looks like Coons or Adlin or Anka Intermediate. It is not, if you want that, I can do that, that's not what this concept shows, okay? So I, I, I do want to qualify that that's, if you want to look at something else, I'm glad to do that. Uh, there is space on this site to do this, uh, on the upper two parking lots that are, we're right on the road there. Basically, that's the only spot left on this site to, yeah, to do that. But we could accommodate fifty to sixty thousand square foot, two-story, portion of it would be two stories. Uh, there would need to be some shared use of facilities such as the auditorium, but this could have a gymnasium. Outdoor space minimal, but I think we could be creative and we could do something. So that's just boot for thought for you.
I will say, you know, I've, I've seen some of the other districts around the state that have used industrial buildings and, you know, or gone and renovated and twisted industrial buildings. And they're actually are pretty cool, I mean, they're, they're...
I think we could make it...
I mean, like, well, even like our discovery, Kathy, I mean, who knew that shipping containers could, you know, look...
Be creative and it costs less too.
And if some option three, sixty and a half million dollars would include, um, all of the programs that we offer at Community?
Currently offer, they could be brought, including... Currently offer, they could be brought, including daycare. You gotta have someone, now, would not be open to the public daycare like what is over there. It would be much more minimal and, but it would be housed in the.
For our students, for the use of our students.
I have just a couple of comments about this. One is that having visited Community fairly recently, we need to do something pretty quickly.
We really do.
That, that school is in sad shape. And what I learned from the principal was, you know, we have sometimes a pregnant student who's told by her doctor that she can't take stairs and so she can't come to school. So we're not able to serve the kids that we need to serve. And these are kids who primarily don't have parents who are really advocating for them. Many of these kids are homeless. Pretty much all of them are free to do lunch, too. These are the least among us. And it's, I feel really strongly that it is up to us to advocate for these kids and get them into this school. And I was really impressed with the number of kids from Community who graduated at the ten-year graduation and we need to build on that success. So I, I, I feel like the principal and the faculty there are doing amazing things with what they have to work with and we need to give them more as soon as we possibly can. The other thing is that it feels to me like this is an opportunity for us to look at the program and what this school offers and just to ask the question, is this what our school system needs programmatically? And let's make sure that if we're buying or building or renovating or whatever we're doing for the facility, that we think about the program at the same time and make sure that we are creating a school that can provide the space that, that would need the best programming for this population.
And that was the concept used with Discovery Academy. Really favored the specific direction that the curriculum was going to get.
It'd be interesting to know the different costs of the different, one, two, ten? Uh, I'm sorry, year, like every year.
Yeah, okay.
And, uh, I mean, obviously that could be done three years. Yeah, maybe that's not obvious. You mean, did it have to be done in ten or could it be, um?
Oh, it could be any good cost like. Now, if you wanted, this assumes you're doing it while kids are there. You're not shutting the school down and doing it. So you gotta be a little careful about doing such a devastating thing that you shut the school down. But yeah, certainly it could be done faster than that. Really, it's the guidelines I gave to the architect, understanding our cash flow because you've seen other, you're about to see another whole menu of kind of debts.
My last idea was centralization for transport across the county. But is it conceivable at all with the property that we've got where the current building is to construct a, a new facility while that went, is that?
Oh, yeah, that, that is an option that is on there. It's a good point. The, on that property of the, um, the current Community High, there isn't enough room to build a new school next to it. I would have a concern and Chip, you might be able to tell us. What do we do with the old building? Would that be a nightmare to, for the community investment to tear that down then? I think it's something to consider.
What would you do with it if you moved it here? And you're, you're still going to hold that building. But if you sell it, then what's that person going to do with it?
Well, and, and I did ask this architect, what are some, what are some things that could be done? And probably adaptive use such as, um, artists' lofts and, and such. Apartments, condos could be done. It could be redeveloped for that. Uh, there's probably some other uses. Maybe another school would want it, but they're going to have to spend that kind of money to make it work.
I mean, how much would it cost to, I, I'm not suggesting this, but how much would it cost enough to get them there?
Greg, can you help with that? You've done some demo. How, what would it cost to demo and remove Community High School from the site?
Wow, you know, we looked at about fifteen thousand just to get rid of recently.
That little house. We're talking seventy-five.
Yeah, at least. You're looking, plus this has got, this has got asbestos in it and some different.
So you're looking at a hundred, two-hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand, you could probably do it.
Yeah, I see you have a note here that says cost to build a new industrial type building on site and demolish.
Okay, so I did put that in.
Will be approximately, oh.
Okay, I did put that as a sub option, yeah.
Yeah, the cost to build a new standard school building on site. Oh, I'm too much for quotations and industrial, that makes me feel better. Cost to build a new standard school building on site and demolish existing building to be approximately four dollars. Wait, no, it says four dollars.
Hey, it's a bargain today, just today. I'm sorry. Every year you gotta find something in my report. I thought I made it through this year.
But you'll pay the difference personally.
You can't get blood out of the turd.
I, I, we'll go back and pour it all up. Carry that over down. I do, like, nice product that makes the channel for that community. It's all it is, we give, it's all it is. There's a store. It's a win, that's seven.
And that's why I said.
Well, Billboard still will, uh, right, and what's that?
Could you do both?
Do, what do you mean?
Could, could you sell the building after you built the school? Or do you need the space where the current school is for the new building?
That's a good question. I think, like, you need ball fields outside, you need parking. I'm not sure the site could be busted up into, you know, planning and zoning wise. It could be, I, I don't know the answer to that, but I think it would be very, it would be crowded. Put this up would be crowded too, so, you know, up if you did it. But potentially you could. I mean, there's, there's multiple options in here. We do need to, like, we need to start moving at some point. And I'd hate to invest a bunch of money, build an elevator and all, and then change course. Would not be a great idea unless you justify it that, hey, you're going to make improvements that will make the sale price, you know, what someone would have to do anyway. So you could justify it that way. Of course, if you did want to sell it, you have to offer it to the county and they.
For a dollar.
For a dollar. And that investment could go away. But with your direction, I'm glad to look at any other, any options. Okay, for third, we really, we have to, this is a lot to absorb. I know, but there's one big section left. Do we have any more questions or direction on the, on Community High?
Any requests or more information?
Yeah, and then you can come later with that.
A lot of expectancy on industrial type building versus standard board, I think more than I said.
Yeah, brick and mortar type building. You know, typically we talk about it's our type fifty-year building. We, we make it last longer than that for a standard type building. An industrial building would be more like a forty-year lifestyle. Of course, we'd make it last longer than that.
And the building during this, a hundred-year building.
Yeah, I mean, anything could be for a great amount of money, you can, you can make anything last. You know, another option is you keep, if it was a concern about the building itself and you could find a place if you didn't want to maintain it, you could do a, a, you could do a major kind of gut renovation, keep the facade, but kind of get rid of some of the other problematic areas and build that more industrial type building or a full prints and mortar building that's kind of behind some of the key features of the building to keep the character. So I'll just throw that out there as another middle round option.
Looking around.
Our long-range plan. And, uh, you can see some needs there. This is kind of our laundry list of other needs that are out there that really are beyond what our yearly capital outlay can absorb. It would put such a, a bet on what that yearly capital outlay would do that things get referred to the long-range plans. We kind of collect them here as well as any other, other, uh, issues that we see due to capacity or membership issues or code issues or equity issues. They all kind of fall in here and we try to prioritize them. Put dollar cost, come up with a concept. Right now, uh, last year, uh, you looked at this and our, our plan is typically to come to you each year and show you the needs, updated needs, uh, that we have with the cost and ask you to authorize the implementation of the first year of that ten-year plan. And then we're going to revisit it every year. So that's what we're doing now is we're revisiting it. Here's our laundry list of, of items and costs associated. So, and we divide them up into one to five and, and five, and six to ten-year kind of plan. And our one to five-year plan, um, guess what? It, it exceeds our capability to fund. That's probably not a surprise to you, but our needs out of distance are available funds. That's just the way it goes. But we're going to propose about twenty-eight million dollars worth of projects in that five years for several reasons, cash flow, right? I worked closely with Roger and Deborah to develop, hey, here's our needs. Here's kind of the funds that we have. How do we match those up? And they, they have run many, many scenarios and I thank them for their patience. So this is, uh, kind of a master lesson. It's going to be easier for you to probably see in your book later on, but here we are. And let's go to the next slide. This blue slide is what we've done kind of last year and where we are in process and what we're going to be asking you to authorize implementation, uh, in this coming year. So you can see the North Boncombe. We bust this stuff out into phases just to make it work. So we try to keep the stuff on our list, prioritize it. And then, uh, ACE is, well, proposing kind of a, a master plan, a more developed plan, but also do a few things there that regardless, we, they really need to do. Staff restrooms and some teacher support areas that are woefully lacking. But it doesn't approach anywhere near that six million dollar, uh, price tag for the whole development. Uh, you can see Discovery, uh, Academy and other schools. We're kind of, we're doing a, a pilot project right now in this building to put, uh, access control on all the doors and for the kids to have a tag like this. And you will get one too that has a chip in it so that we can control access to this building and stem, the Discovery Academy can do the same. You'll be able to walk up to the door. There'll be a chip in here with a fob and that will let you in. Right now, it's kind of a free draw. So that's our, our, uh, our pilot project. And then we hope to extend this to, uh, to all the other schools really on a primary basis. We have Bell Conference Room. They have a, uh, admin support. They, they really don't have a, a conference room that they can use. So there's, but you can see no funding, it's deferred. We have a number of ADA issues and this is one of them. Greenhouse renovations at six high schools. They are not ADA accessible and we've done a study and identified issues in the greenhouses, the exterior, the interior and the food labs at, uh, at all our high schools. And these are incremental steps, other than the greenhouses, which would, uh, complete that project to, uh, move towards compliance. You can scan through here and see a number of other projects, uh, open to your suggestions on something that we missed that needs to be added or, uh, in, in terms of priorities. But this is how I'm seeing it right now for a total of five point two million dollars, okay?
So we just talked about, like, we just talked about Community High School. So what's included here in Community is?
Okay, so I had to make an assumption. We gotta get started. We gotta do something.
Right.
I made the assumption for whether, whether, whatever it's worth is that we would start with the design of a new Community High School here with, uh, some site improvements. And I don't want to be presumptuous, but I gotta plug in some numbers somewhere. And I, I don't know what to do. You could take those same numbers more or less and say, nope, we want to do, we want to begin renovations there. Not a problem. I just had to use a real life scenario that I plugged in here. Uh, you'll see turf, go back one more time. Turf replacements. Tonight you will see a, a request to, uh, accept the proposal from the low bidder for the AC Reynolds High School turf replacement. That's our first turf replacement that we will be doing. We're going to do them all. Bourbon High School is next. We had a, a company come in and test the turf and, and inspect it and give us a priority list and kind of recommend it where it can be. We have been putting away funds in, through capital outlay every year for turf replacement. It is not enough to do all the schools, but it gets us a good start. In fact, it's going to do Reynolds, Irwin, and then I believe Alvin is the next one. Don't hold me to that. It'll do a portion of that. So it gets us going in the right direction. We also need to replace tracks. So you'll see that in here.
Well, we've approved all that.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, did we do voted and did all that last?
Last year, we did. Dr. Adele presented it and said, that's the direction we want to go.
Over five years, is that correct?
It was five day.
Eight year plan.
Five day.
You're going to see the rest of that come to fruition. Again, it's a cash flow issue of how we can get all that in there. And we do that within five years.
So is that something the board only votes on every five years or we vote on an, sort of an updated version each year?
Well, you can always change course. That's your, you can stop anything. You could stop A C Intermediate right now if you wanted to and say, let's just, I mean, you have that choice.
Let's just ask this new board member, will, is this, will we be voting on it again this year?
It will be voting on it to authorize implementation, which assumes that we're fulfilling that five-year game plan. Part of it is the five-year game plan. You, you will be asked to vote on that. Okay? So then this puts the rest of the five years, uh, coming, you know, this past year. So here's one year, another year, another year. And when you come down, you see the projects and there's phases, uh, multiple phased projects in here. We do little bits typically that you do design, you know, get that going and get a real good price for you then. Only until you do the design of, of that, of full design, do you really know what the, the real prices are and based on the economic conditions. But you see a scattering of these athletic improvements, the turf and their costs. And down here is kind of some summary. So year seventeen, uh, we're recommending five point four million dollars. We're carrying over some funds, uh, from previous years that we have a balance there. And so I'm showing you what's, uh, what that balances. But once you get into here, the, the funds, available funds, of course, are not all that reliable. They're unknown, they're projections. We don't know exactly what they're going to be. But based on our best guess with finance, and they're going to show you a, uh, cash flow chart. This is our best guess. If something happens, good or bad, this can be adjusted the next year. And you see a little, so we're kind of a running surplus here of a buffer that's in addition to a buffer that we don't want to touch, kind of the seed money. And Roger will explain it, okay? So to the next one. And then, uh, this is kind of the five to ten years. So here's all the projects that didn't get addressed in that five-year plan or were only that partially phased. And, uh, guess what? It's fifty-three million, six hundred five hundred dollars. So a lot of money, a lot of needs. But you can see Avery's Creek phases four through seven. So in that previous, we addressed phases one through three. I've actually. I've actually added one phase on, which is that restroom, that really minor first thing there. So you can study this if you, if you like and provide feedback to Dr. Baldwin. And if you want to see something modified or changed, glad to look into it. So how do we fund this? Roger?
So as we spoke before, we had, we have three distinct different pots of money. We didn't spend capital outlay. We went over the Article forty, forty-two, which is the blue book that you have. The other two is Article thirty-nine, the lottery that we were planning, we use for long-range planning and debt service. This is the ten-year cash flow model of each of those two funding sources based on the long-range plan that Tim just went over. It takes into account the, the amounts that he has, the proposed expenditures that he has in there each year. It, it does not, if you go to the next one, it does not go below a critical level that we deem critical because if you remember, we had three and a half million dollars of roofing that we said needed to be done soon. So if one of those roofs collapsed or, you know, if they need to be replaced, we need to have the funds available to do something like that. So we've kept a balance that doesn't go below, it goes just below six million, but it doesn't go below five million just in case anything like that happens. Another reason that we're keeping the, that this model keeps the fund balance around that amount is because there are two sales tax bills that are out there that are getting ready to, that could be, that could impact the capital outlay fund. One of them is more substantial than the others, but what we did with this is cap revenue at an amount based on the mid deal, based on the deal that would say we max out at our thirteen, fourteen level and any growth is distributed by population, not by point of sale. So we've taken, we've taken a conservative approach with this in two ways. Capping the revenue that, that the projections that the county gives us and also to make sure that we have enough money. Assuming that's true, we have enough money for it if something were to happen. Any questions on that?
So this is your projected balance after the projected expenses on each of these particular years, correct? Based on what you think revenue and-
That would be our capital fund balance.
No growth.
No growth. That would be our capital fund balance that will, when, when looking at those two funding sources. And that takes into account all the expenditures Tim just went over as well as debt service, including the debt service that we're going to be adding with in intermediate.
And with the, having said that, from your perspective, two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, is that a safe, is that chart in your mind usually good at night because there's not money in the fund balance? Is there too much money in the fund balance? And what would be a low point, a low number, is that three million?
Yeah, the lowest I've ever seen us look at as a critical level is two to three million. We're taking the more conservative approach now, five to six million because of those two sales tax bills. And we don't know what, are going to, we don't know what's going to happen with those two. I don't think they made the, I don't think they made the crossover. However, they could always, I feel like they could always write that into the budget bill somehow. So I don't think it's dead and by anything. So out of, one, out of those, or in those bills, we were one of eight counties that would be losing funding. So there are ninety-two other counties that have profit on that, doesn't really give us a whole lot of-
We're in the minority.
We're in the minority of them. But the, the other bill, the one that we kind of went with to be conservative with, he is from Mecklenburg County, they're one of the ones that lost too, Senator Ruko. And him and the Senator Harry Brown, that, Harry Brown's the one that presented the lower drastic ton. They were supposed to get together and have meetings on how they could compromise the two bills, but I have not been able to find anything, have to commit a report for that. We're going to keep looking. We look every day to see what's been looping on that. And I have not seen.
Do you have other questions?
Does that make sense?
No, I'm good if you have any questions.
Are you good? I mean, to answer your question of the fund balance, it makes me feel pretty good. You know, Tim and Greg could tell you, you may be better than me, but what fund balance? Do you think that's a healthy fund balance?
Well, we were at two to three million in the past when we felt we had a stable revenue source and that was comfortable. It's what Roger has described as disconservative.
And, and to make, I think what makes us feel the best is that I think regardless of what sales tax bill happens, we'll be able to pay our debt service. It will just be what projects can we do on top of our debt service for years to come? You know, maybe the five to range, or the five-year plan becomes a seven-year plan. Maybe they get stretched out a little bit further than what was presented today.
But this fund balance is taking into account that five-year plan.
Right.
And it's all, it's in there.
Right. But if revenue's coming in less, then I'll cap them out.
Right.
That would, but I feel like the way we capped it was, should be right on.
Right on.
Yeah.
And I think that's the rationale going back to the question about what we're going forward, voting on this one five-year plan. I, I think the board would certainly have, they get questioned for a learning, but certain items on that five-year plan, in fact, the majority of them have already been approved by, by prior board. It may be to focus then to go on those, those particular projects that have just newly been introduced. But the value of doing this every year, I think, is sort of underscored by what Roger just talked about, which is we never know when legislation will change and legislation can have an incredible impact on that, that chart right there and also an impact on that long-range plan and project.
And we have to be careful too, you know, looking at the lottery, that, those, those fund balances might change a bit as we move forward because lottery funds, we need to really be careful and deliberate about which projects we use lottery funds for because of the extra stipulation. So if we use it for a project, it might go lower, which means Article thirty-nine would go up a bit. So that's why the second slide shows us combined.
The legislature always has that option to go back to the distribution of those lottery funds, those percentages and shift it for other things. So again, I think it's, it's a value for the board to look at each and every year and make change.
I will point out at the end of year eighteen, nineteen, we, we have in addition to what Roger showed, a one point nine million dollar surplus that isn't, that's on top of that. So there it is. Because we keep, we carry over funds, assuming revenue. So there's almost two million dollars in addition, but you know, we need to revisit it each year and see what.
Because we are assuming revenue.
We're assuming revenue, flat revenue. And we don't know if it's going to go up or down or... That's all I have for you.
Mr. Dr. Baldwin?
As I said, I have one very important, I have become a pursuer of knowledge about swimming pools.
Oh.
It's an introduction to bring the county, Bunkham County organization, maintenance and operation facility center. It's a, it's a very basic agreement, then Shatley or the crew at county to put this together. I'll just take you through those points very, as precisely as I can. Essentially, we have asked for that timeline to remain as two years to allow just a very conservative timeline for the construction of the new pool facility that the county has already allotted and approved funding for. So it is a two-year, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. That's the, that's the reason for that two-year status. Once this is signed, we assume the complete operation and maintenance of that center. And again, Mr. Shatley's worked with, with Ron Venturella. We have to maintain property insurance that, that is currently in a wish thing that was here, but he is going to be overturned later on time. But that is part of that agreement. The second I want to read, the school board shall not be required to keep the center open for the use of the general public. That's very important because it reduces essentially that twenty-four-seven opening throughout the year for that facility. That's important for that facility in addition to, to remain safe over the two-year period. County agrees, the college's school board may retain a private agency to assist with the operation and the pool. I'm going to begin superintendent comments of talking about partnerships. One of those important partnerships that hopefully will strengthen and expand is the YMCA. YMCA is a national organization. They are experts in pool maintenance and operation. We've been in multiple conversations with, with Paul Best at the Y. And so we're pursuing that partnership to take on their, ask for their expertise and a service contract for, to assist. We are not in swim business. I saw Greg, who's the closest I've ever seen, having a heart attack in my office, talking about the pools. So that, that I believe is moving a bit positive. And hopefully, if the June board can help bring something regarding that contract and partnership. The Y, the county has allotted this agreement, thirty-eight thousand dollars. We sent a team of our staff, the YMCA sent a team of their staff, their pool experts, our facility expert. We identified two areas that we feel like need to be addressed fairly immediately. The one is the roof, so fairly minimal, am I right with that, Tim? And we call it probably minimal compared to our roof's repair that needs to be made. It's ordinary, correct?
Yes, definitely, yeah.
And then as far as the interior, the pump and the filter system, the Y has recommended strongly that we move in the direction that they did with the downtown Y. It is a fix that we should also make that, that pool, that pump system, filter system more efficient, the safety, the cost in terms of the chemicals. And you can also see the other important figure, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the county, a maximum up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year that if needed to operate and maintain that pool. So I can tell you very, very clearly that I have no intention to get close to that hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Again, it's restricted use, which would be for our student athletes and our students. Whether, again, in that Y partnership, whether that be our high school swim teams, whether that be our middle school club that used that facility, whether that be, again, student athletes are involved in Y activities with the swimming pool, they will be Bunkham County connected students. So that's a very important number. Second page, we would be required to provide the invoices for calls, again, for the chemicals, the supplies. If we contracted with the Y and those services, that's also an invoice we can take to the county. For example, I would work with the Y to be providing staff. We need lifeguards at all practices, we need lifeguards during the meets that take place between that November and February season, mid-February season. And let's see, number eight is also, I underline this, is very important. Takes the county away, takes the county's responsibility to be injured or damaged person of property. Again, that's why we have the property insurance in place. I'm working with both high school swim coaches, again, working a lot with the Y. We've had multiple conversations with the county manager, as well as teams working together to make this happen and in front of you. My recommendation, and it's going to be only agenda tonight, and I feel very thankful for recommending this agreement to the board. And the great thing about it is I don't think we got the goggle or bootle or whatever. I think we're going to come later for win-win parties.
I want to thank Dr. Baldwin for his work for us on, on this topic. It was a never-ending story for a short period of time and he has masterful skills at pulling people together to solve problems. And he certainly did that for us. And from the board, I want to thank you for that. I just also want to tell you it's really cute to watch Tim feeling, go up the ladder and just trip across the top of that pool, looks like near impotence without, and the bra. And I'm thinking, oh, and Molly, he's going to go fall in something. Do any of the board members have anything to add or would you like to adjourn for a few minutes and then re-adjourn at five-thirty? Thank you. We are adjourned.